Good evening. And welcome to the City of Palm Coast Agenda Council Meeting. This agenda has been amended. Today is Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. It's a rainy day, but it's still a beautiful day in Palm Coast. I'm calling this meeting to order. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. And if you have a hat, please uncover.
Aye. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under God, in the soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Virginia, roll call, please.
Mayor Branquino.
Here.
Councilmember Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Mayor, councilmember Barbosa is absent.
Thank you. I think this is appropriate time to wish our colleague that is not here today, wish him speedy recovery. He's at the hospital right now with COVID. So please, let's all take this very serious. Right now, we're going into public participation. I would like to let the public know that you are entitled to three minutes upon a podium to speak about anything you want, except for items in the agenda. Please keep your phones on silent and be respectful whenever you come over here. No need to say no more politics, no more campaigning, because the campaign is over. So, no need for that. Anybody from the public wish to make any comments? Please approach the podium, state your name clearly to the record, and you'll have three
My name, everybody can hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Patochik. And, good evening. And I live at Carlos Court and have lived in Palm Coast for 20 years. I have walked and biked over 15 years on Cimarron Drive multiple times a week. During this time, I have seen car, bike, and pedestrian traffic steadily increase over the years. Increased vehicle traffic has been documented with traffic studies by the city. I am here today, however, to express our gratitude to the city council and staff members for the actions they have taken to date. For example, signage has been put on Cimarron Drive, and it basically says, "Share the road," with a little biker and all this other stuff on the bottom, so it's getting people's attention. The school system has changed some of their routing down Cimarron. It used to be there were a couple stops where the kids would have to go actually across the street to get into the bus. Well, they just made a few changes, so now wherever the bus stops, the kids walk, get right into the, uh, into the bus without having to cross the road. The Palm Coast staff has organized the Cimarron Drive Neighborhood Meeting tomorrow, August 4th, and it's at 6:00 p.m. at the community center. It is my understanding that the city staff will further discuss possible actions to take regarding the bike trail pedestrian path along Cimarron, as well as gain more input from those of us who live in that area. Again, I'd like to thank you for continuing to listen to us. I know we've been up at this stand a lot, but you guys, folks, ladies, are listening to us, and we appreciate that. The ideal thing for us would be, and I'm not sure how many familiar with Club Field Drive, that is an example of something we would be really happy to have. Increased awareness for vehicles to keep a safe distance is appreciated, in addition to safety for any person who walks or bikes along Cimarron. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Please state your name to the record clearly, please.
I'm Al Krier. Again, I'm on Safety on Cimarron. The part that I'd like to cover is to update everybody on the petitions. There's been two petitions submitted so far, one for all the people on Cimarron, the second one is all the finger streets that go into Cimarron, there's 10 of them. And I'm delivering another petition tonight, and that is for Cochise. Cochise is the last northern road after what we call Suicide Turn. And there's a, we have a complete, again, a complete listing, and we only get one signature per house. We go to every residence and see them, get their feeling, and there'll be five more. No, there's going to be only four, and then one miscellaneous, so there'll be five more. But our thinking is that the more people we got that are in favor of it later on, when the program gets going, it should be lots easier to make it run. To give you some idea, and I know, we've been up here 20 times, and you people have been fabulous, but there's 800 houses that filter from all five different communities through Cimarron. And, believe it or not, we're up into this, we're pushing 600 signatures already. And I'll give this petition to them. I would like to mention that tonight, riding over here in this rain, I started looking both sides of Cimarron, some of the other streets, and we got a drainage problem. So my thinking is that maybe if we do one project, we might take care of two problems, the safety on Cimarron and drainage. But in closing, I just, I just can't mention enough, the city has been so gracious, and we've had help from just everybody, and Jim gave a lot what's being done. And I just want to let you know that we really appreciate it, that of course, I don't want it to stop. Let's keep pushing it. The end goal is to get that sidewalk or path or get it in a safe, a safe situation. And again, I always end this way, you people have worked so hard to make this a nice place to live. And I'll tell you, I love this place. I thank you very much. I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, all. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Mark Strobridge, the Chief of Staff of Flagler County Sheriff's Office. We want to be here tonight in celebration of the mayor-elect Alvin, as he takes his oath of office today. We would also want to speak to other topics such as our budgeting process. We want to briefly say that--
Chief, let me, let me--
This is not about travel.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that everybody on the council has supported the sheriff's office and supported law enforcement. But there is, there is a triad to public safety. It's emergency medical services, fire, and law enforcement services. And you've done a very good job with, with fire and emergency medical services, making sure they were taken care of. In the past, law enforcement has been that, that third leg that has never been brought to the table. To the credit of the current interim city manager and the leadership team on the staff, they've invited us to that table next year. But I would encourage you, as a brand-new team of policymakers tonight, in celebration, to provide directions to that staff that law enforcement isn't the afterthought, but law enforcement is the beginning thought of part of the public safety. So I ask, in that regard, that you make those kind of considerations as you go forward with the budgeting process and such. But we are, and we do appreciate the support. And Mayor Branquino, we want to convey our thanks for your service sucking up as mayor during this period of time. I know it's always a very difficult task to take the lead, as those things happen. As Mayor-elect Alvin takes his oath of office tonight, we want to say congratulations to him, his family, and hope that we develop and build a, grow a relationship that will last forever, so we can all be where we want to be in a nice, safe community.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, chief. Next speaker, please. Please state your name to the record.
Good evening. Cornelia Downing Manfree. I'm here to congratulate Mayor-elect David Alvin, and also to the city council members. Please, let's make this the new City of Palm Coast. Be able to find a city manager, all that apply, a strong commitment to the community for the development that's heading this way, show that we are a welcoming city and that we're here to execute as we grow, but preserve our environment. I am very proud of this city. To have run for this office was a very proud moment. I was looking forward to working with all of you, but I believe Mayor-elect Alvin will do an excellent job. But I invite you all to be a collaborative team to move us forward. And I say that with all sincerity, so that the public, in these trying times that we have, both economically and with COVID, that you will be the shining stars as a new city council. Let's work together. Any ideas? I'm welcome to talk to you, but I really see our city moving forward. We're being sandwiched between Volusia and St. John's Growth. We have to be ready for it. So I look forward to working with all of you, and I look forward and applaud Mayor-elect David Alvin. Thank you.
Thank you for kind words. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Denise Calderwood.
Please say in the microphone, please, please put a microphone--
Right, no problem. I was trying to save you time. Hi, Denise Calderwood, citizen of Palm Coast. I again want to thank you all for allowing us to speak, and congratulations to Mayor Alvin. I hope he will do a great job leading the city. And Mr. Branquino, councilman, you did a beautiful job filling in and doing everything that you need. Ms. Bevan, fantastic, leading the city and stepping up. I truly appreciate your, your wisdom, and Lauren, as well, making a team and keeping the city floating amongst everything that's happened. You know, in Chinese culture, the symbol for chaos is also the symbol for opportunity, because during the times of crisis, that's when leaders can actually step in and actually make a change and a difference. And as long as you follow the past and follow what you state you're doing, then go forward with that in the future and not just change because of whim and of prayer. Because right now, with the state of everything, where we are, you know, I personally stepped in and took responsibility for the people, the homeless who were living behind the library, was able to place half of those people, we bought trailers for people, moved them into campers, okay? Personally, we stepped up to that plate. The county and the city, you know, still hasn't figured out who's doing what, where, with the funds that are available. At the same time, the state has $99 million sitting in an account that can be utilized for any community that's willing to step up and have some plans. I'm concerned, at the same time, that the city goes ahead and buys the White House that's on 100 and the CDD, you know, with, when people in the community were going after that building, supposedly that there's some ideas behind it, what the city wants to do, and package it and put it together for a development deal. Hopefully, it's not going to be a development deal that's going to leave people out on the streets and homeless. You know, right now, with the moratorium being lifted, we're going to have more people who are homeless in Flagler County, schools starting next week. My phone has rung off the hook with families who are living in the hotel and taking their kids to school, you know, starting that. And the only services we have are in Volusia County, that's if they have space available for our families, which will put an undue burden on the Flagler County schools to transport the kids. Councilman Danko, you've made a comment that if you can't afford to live here, then you shouldn't be living here. I would like to know your thoughts--
Excuse me, Denise, you're going to have to direct the words to me, please.
Okay, no problem. You know, those kind of quotes in the newspaper that have been stated, when you can't afford to live in your own community where you were born and raised, that means we have a problem, okay? And that means there might be future problems in the, you know, calling in, fair housing, HUD, you know, to say, what is the city actually doing? We need to get to the bottom of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. State your name to the record, sir, please.
David Willis. Like to talk to you about invalidation of Article 7, Section 7 of the city charter. I know that this thing has been negated, but I'm here to talk about that, and if that is too much, then we'll talk about Title IX, Florida Statute 101, 6103, Article, Section 6, which states that no, no tabulation or publication of the results of the election shall be put out before 7:00 p.m. the night of the election. Now, to my understanding, all these informations were put out, which puts us in violation here. Now, I understand that you all are going to certify the election tonight, and that'll be good.
Sir, I will give you an opportunity to talk about the election and for the next, I think it's just about the next item.
All right. Well, I'm about done here anyway, but there will be some oncoming lawsuits and incidents of referral. You know who's in violation, you know who's not in violation. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please. Hearing none. I'll bring you back to this dais, and let me start by the, the last person. Your answers, Mr. Willis, regarding the tabulations, they will be answered at the proper time, which you're going to have an item for that. Everybody else, Ms. Calderwood, Cornelia Manfree, Chief Mark, Mr. Krier, and Mr. Jimmy Potovich, basically, I want to thank you for thanking us. We're not perfect, by far, we're not perfect, but when we hear words like this, we feel good. The same way we feel bad when we don't please somebody, we feel good when we hear this. And remember, the day you try to please everyone, you'll please no one. At least, that's the way I look at things. I was going to allow you to, Mr. Ratchman, to answer Mr. Willis, but I think we're going to have the presence of the proper person to answer the question. Okay, after public participation, we, do you mind reading the resolutions for the--
Of course, Mr. Mayor. This is item, Agenda Item Number 1, the Election Certification Resolution. It's a resolution of the city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the acceptance and certification of the results of the mayoral special election for the City of Palm Coast as canvassed and reported by the canvassing board for the 2021 special mayoral election, providing for determination as to the winning candidate, providing for conflict severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right. I think on that resolution, any, any of my colleagues wish to speak regarding this resolution?
We need a motion in a second.
I have no comment. I think the resolution speaks for itself. I will certainly move to approve the final 2021 special mayoral election results.
So you need a second, yes? Yes. Yes, I'll second. Okay, beautiful. All right. Before we move into voting, I would like to give the opportunity, and this is the opportunity, to talk about that, this resolution. If my colleagues don't wish to say anything right now, then I'll just bring it to the public. Anyone wish to speak regarding this resolution? Please approach the podium, and you've got three minutes to speak about it. Hearing none, bring it over here, and Virginia, ready for a vote?
Yes. Roll call.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? No, so, motion passes. Elect Mayor David Alvin, please approach the podium. Virginia, would you be so kind? And the oath of office will be taking place.
Mr. Alvin, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, David Alvin--
I, David Alvin--
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear--
That I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution--
That I will support, defend, and protect the Constitution.
And the government of the United States--
And the government of the United States--
And of the state of Florida--
And of the state of Florida--
That I am duly qualified to hold office--
That I am duly qualified to hold office--
Under the Constitution of the state--
Under the Constitution of the state--
And that I will well and faithfully perform--
And that I will well and faithfully perform--
The duties of mayor of the City of Palm Coast--
The duties of mayor of the City of Palm Coast--
Of which I am now about to enter--
Of which I am now about to enter--
So help me God.
So help me God.
I think your words will be heard from here, myself.
Speak.
Right here, my friend. You're now the mayor.
Yeah, I understand.
You belong here.
I understand. Let me, I'll speak. I will speak from here for a moment, and then I will join you in just a second. Because I am now mayor, I am afforded the opportunity to speak to you and not show my back to you as if I were making public comments, so please excuse me, my colleagues. I am grateful to have the opportunity to serve you as your mayor of the City of Palm Coast. I am honored to have the trust and confidence of the citizens of Palm Coast who've asked me to work for you. I want to express the strong support and ask for the prayers of our community for Councilman Barbosa and the Barbosa family. He is receiving excellent care, and we are very hopeful for a full and strong recovery. I want to express our appreciation to Mayor Branquino for his service this year. I also want to share my gratitude for the entire team of city employees who serve our citizens each day with integrity, dedication, and professionalism. I am forever thankful for the love and support of our family and friends. My wife, Tammy, is incredible. My daughter, Melanie, is amazing. Leadership is all about making the needs, problems, hopes, and dreams of others our own. We are given this wonderful opportunity to help improve life for our families, community, and future generations. Those who have worked with me describe me as a proven problem solver. I pledge to the citizens of Palm Coast that my focus is on you and how our city government can best serve you, your family, and your neighborhood. I've led several successful companies. I've been a volunteer leader and champion for our schools. In every leadership responsibility in my career and life, I have found these principles work best. Success takes a team. There are times we serve on a team we selected, and there are times when the team is picked for you by others. Either way, you still must lead and do your job. The mission can't wait. I view our council, our council, as the leadership team working for the citizens of Palm Coast. People don't have to love each other or be exactly alike to be on the same team. They do have to understand each other. To understand, you have to listen and learn. You need to learn what's important to others and understand their perspective. Treating others with respect and kindness is key. You can't order people around. My title may be different, but the last time I checked, everyone on the council has the same one vote. It's very valuable to have a robust and respectful exchange of ideas. You never know where the best idea will come from. Always attack problems, not people. I will always conduct the people's business in a professional, civil, and appropriate manner. I think that's what our residents want. It helps get us the positive outcomes for our community. If you do this consistently, then over time, you will find ways to work together on different priorities and projects. Good process helps great results. Carefully collect and analyze the right information, and performance metrics have a deliberative, thoughtful, and analytical approach. Listen to a lot of people. Capitalize on the experience and expertise of others. Carefully consider all options. Always evaluate everything you are doing to secure the best results. Positive progress also takes time. Not everything can be addressed in a day, nor would you want us to try to do it that way. You have my commitment that our city government will protect our special quality of life and provide the programs, services, and infrastructure you expect to do it effectively and efficiently. I know I have plenty to learn, and I bring a humble heart and a willingness to work as your mayor. I believe public service is a noble calling. My sons have served America as a police detective, an FBI agent, and a pilot in the army. Our family knows both the joy and the pain and sacrifice of public service. I am deeply honored to be trusted to serve as your mayor. It's a trust I will protect and safeguard in my every word and deed. Many of us are now blessed to be parents. It changes your perspective. The focus of your life is the future for those children you love. We want our children to have and enjoy a Palm Coast that enables them to experience everything their families and dreams desire now and for generations to come. I thank you for the opportunity of a lifetime to serve you.
Thank you. You too. I was about to tell you, your three minutes are up, but you know, like-- Congratulations. But then again, you're the mayor, but I can't do that. Sir, serve well. That's all I can tell you. This is your seat, and you are right here.
Oh, so, item number one, I'm sorry, where are we?
Item number three.
Item number three.
Item number three, the minutes.
The minutes need to be approved.
Minutes of the city council. May I have a motion to approve--
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July 20, 2021. Business meeting at July 27, 2021, special workshop.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Presentations. I believe we have a presentation on the floor, if you would be so kind. Chief Berryhill, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Alvin. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Kyle Berryhill. I'm the interim fire chief, and I'm presenting on the latest of the COVID-19 public health crisis. We're one week further into this wave of the COVID-19 public health crisis and the new Delta variant. And as has been reported in the local and national media, Florida and subsequently Flagler County are experiencing a surge in the coronavirus. Three weeks ago, Flagler County had 88 new cases, two weeks ago, 400, and as of today, Flagler has 671 cases in the last seven days. We believe the Delta variant is now the predominant variant. The data shows it to be 50 or 60% more contagious strain of the virus. It's essentially as contagious as the chickenpox. The CDC recommendations for areas of high transmissions, which includes Flagler County, is to encourage mask use when indoors, in crowds, to practice social distancing when possible for both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals. The data still shows that the vaccines are effective against the Delta variant, providing significant protection from both symptomatic disease and hospitalization. There are absolutely breakthrough cases where vaccinated individuals have contracted the disease-- the disease. However, these individuals perform much better against the coronavirus. Vaccines reduce transmission, reduce symptomatic disease, significantly reduce hospitalizations, and perform in the 99% range of preventing death from COVID. This week, we began to experience workplace impacts due to the spread of the coronavirus. Multiple departments are dealing with COVID-positive employees and working through the challenges associated with that. Anecdotally, a rough estimate of last week's fire department calls for service found about one-third of the calls were either confirmed positives or suspected positives. Our call volume is up. Last year, the department ran just over 11,000 responses. This year, we are on pace for 12,000 through June. If we kept up the July pace of 1,200 calls for that month, our annual rate of calls will be 14,500, and July is typically our slowest month when it's raining like it is today. Asymptomatic people not in the medical field or working in congregate facilities do not need to be tested. Our citizens can find a list of symptoms on the CDC website, and a list of testing options can be found at www.flaglercounty.gov/covid. Vaccines continue to be available at the local pharmacies, and vaccination locations can also be found at the FlaglerCounty/covid website. Finally, we've witnessed many citizens begin to change their practices over the last few weeks, and they show a special appreciation when we see them in the community, and we really appreciate that. We encourage our citizens to review the CDC recommendations, to make the choices that is best for their families, and to continue to show respect and consideration for each other, our neighbors.
Was that presentation? I just, if I may, Ma, I just want to thank you. I just want to thank you for your care, the way you've shown throughout this whole thing. I just, you know, when it comes to the vaccines, plenty of my friends, and I consider almost everybody out there my friend, we have to think of one thing. We have plenty of people out there, especially countries like Afghanistan, Iraq, they are willing to take a bullet for our country. Some of us over here wouldn't take a needle for our sons and daughters and neighbors. Please think of that. Be a hero, in my opinion. Thank you.
Do any of our council members have a question or a comment on the presentation?
I would just like to reemphasize the urgency, not from a vaccine perspective. Perhaps a more effective avenue is the fact that our hospital is now in status black where certain procedures and elective procedures are being canceled, and it's impacting people who need hospitalization from all sorts of other things besides COVID. So this is extending beyond the bounds of whether or not it's a personal decision on vaccination, and I strongly encourage vaccination. But be aware that this is starting to impact people beyond COVID. There's two buttons in life you should never push: panic and snooze. And we're at the point now where we're leaning our hands on both of these, and we need to make a decision and be personally responsible to try to protect individuals from COVID, but also from anything that can happen to you where all of a sudden, we don't have a hospital where you can be served. So please be careful.
Thank you. And I'm going to add to that. We've been in discussions at the city throughout the day in preparation for these comments tonight, but more importantly, for the plan going forward. And I'm reminded of a quote that goes way back in time from a president that you all will remember. And the quote goes something along the lines of, "Ask not so much," and I'm not quoting it, I'll make up my own words here, "not so much about what your city and your state and your county can do for you. I'm going to plead to all of our residents, it's now time for each of you, for me, for our council members, for our staff, and for our residents, to make a bold move forward, to make a choice. The Health Department recommends three different things that you can do. You will have to make a choice and pick one, two, or all three. You can get a vaccination. We have vaccinations. You can mask. We have masks. You can social distance and clean up. You have the choice." So I'm putting it out to myself and to the residents and the citizens of Palm Coast. Make that choice. Start thinking about what you can do, and start thinking about how you can better protect your neighbor across the street, next door, your family, your friends. I want each of us to begin to take that responsibility. So Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Item number five on the agenda, ordinance first read.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is an ordinance that would approve a revision to the Land Development Code, specifically Chapter 10.02, the floodplain management. This item was advertised to be heard by the city council for this evening in our business meeting. However, staff is requesting that this item be continued to a time certain date, September 14, 2021, for the city council workshop and the first read on September 21, 2021, business meeting. Addition, and the purpose of that is to include additional mandatory state language, which needs to be addressed. At this time, I would suggest that the council entertain a motion to continue the item to a time certain date of September 14, 2021, workshop, with the first read on September 21, business meeting.
So I would ask the city council for a motion.
I'll make it.
Thank you, Councilmember Duncan. And a second we have. Any further discussion? Then I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Think you have to take it to the public.
From the public. I'm sorry. I will open this motion and ordinance up to the public for comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on the ordinance? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'll bring it back to the city council, and I will ask for a roll call vote.
Those in favor, say aye.
Vice Mayor Brinquino?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Affirmative.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Item number six, ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is an ordinance to the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the city of Palm Coast 2035 Comprehensive Plan as previously omitted pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, creating Chapter 10, property rights element in order to meet statutory requirements, providing for conflicts ratification of prior acts, codification, severability, and providing for an effective date. Mayor, Council, this is a legislative matter in response to a recent requirement imposed upon all local governments by the state of Florida.
Good evening, city council members. Ray Tyner, Deputy Chief Development Officer. As Mr. Reichman mentioned, yes, this bill was passed July 1, 2021, became state law to require for all municipalities and all counties to modify and add an element to our comprehensive plan, specifically a property rights element. The language that we are using for this is consistent with the state law and verbatim to the state law. But with that, Mr. Papa will have a brief presentation to outline the details.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of city council, Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. As Mr. Tyner mentioned, and our city attorney mentioned, this is essentially a mandate from state legislature to add what's called a property rights element to our comprehensive plan. Just a brief history, that House Bill 59 was the law that passed this mandate. So that became law on July 1, and that mandates to add that property rights element to the comprehensive plan. And the purpose of this element is really to express the legislative intent by the legislature that government entities who have a comprehensive plan, like the city of Palm Coast, Flagler County, and other municipalities and counties throughout the state, that they would respect the judicially acknowledged and constitutionally protected private property rights that are emboldened like in the bill, in the Constitution of the United States, and also in the state constitution and the state comprehensive plan. And House Bill 59, the bill itself that was passed, included the statement of rights, and those are the language that we will adopt as part of, that we're proposing to adopt as part of that property rights element. So verbatim from House Bill to eliminate any questions from the state who will review this amendment about whether we follow the intent of the law. So those rights include the right of a property owner to physically possess and control his or her interest in the property, including easements, leases, or mineral rights. The right of a property owner to use, maintain, develop, and improve his or her property for personal use or for the use of any other person, subject to state law and local ordinances. The third right, the right of a property owner to privacy and to exclude others from the property to protect the owner's possessions and property. And finally, the right of a property owner to dispose of his or her property through sale or gift. Again, that state, those, these statements of rights are taken directly from House Bill 59. And so this item was brought before the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board, and at that, at that meeting, public hearing, they did recommend that city council find the proposed property rights element consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to city council. Typical with any amendment to the comprehensive plan. This is the first public hearing. We will then transmit this to the state land planning agency. That's the Department of Economic Opportunity. For authority, they review, and we will bring this back with their comments at city council, for city council's second hearing, likely in October. Staff will be happy to answer any questions.
Does the city council have any questions for the president? Any question? I have one question, Mr. Papa. So do I understand that every city in the state of Florida will adopt the same language and words that we've just discussed?
Maybe not necessarily the same language. Everyone's required to adopt a property rights element, but there, I think every municipality has an opportunity to tweak the language or adopt something a little different. I think the city is taking the safe route here by adopting the language that's within the House bill.
Very good. Thank you. If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion. Nope, I'm sorry, public. I'll open it up for public comment, please. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this ordinance first read? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up to the city council.
I'll make a motion for the certainties approving the amendment.
Thank you.
Seconded.
And a second. Very good. Any other discussion? Very good. Then I would ask for a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Brinquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Affirmative.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Item number seven, ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is an ordinance to the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This ordinance amends the official zoning map for approximately 10.85 acres, more or less, of certain real property described as part of tax parcel ID number 39123140010100056, generally located about 450 feet east of Old Kings Road and about one-third mile north of State Route 100, also known as Moody Boulevard. And more opportunity described in the attached Exhibit A to this ordinance. The rezoning is from high intensity commercial, or COM3, zoning district, to the multifamily residential 2, or MFR2, zoning district. This ordinance provides for conflicts, for severability, and provides for an effective date. Mr. Mayor, Council, as I'm sure you're aware, this is a quasi-judicial matter. This is the first reading, so if there have been any ex parte communications regarding this matter prior to this evening's hearing, those should be disclosed at this time.
I've had none.
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 I've received an email and a, an attachment regarding this issue, but it will not interfere or interfere with my decision-making on the ordinance. Very good.
Mayor, city council, good evening. Mr. Hoover, our senior planner, AICP senior planner, will have the details of the rezoning application.
Good evening, everyone. The tribute is located about 450 feet east of Old Kings Road and about a third of mile north of State Route 100. It's about 10.85 acres, the portion there rezoning. The property owner wants to rezone the property from high intensity commercial, also known as COM3, to multifamily residential 2, also known as MFR2. Raven Chill Holdings LLC is the contracted purchaser of the east half, which is shown in yellow, of Track 4, and also the 11.33 acres, Track 2 to the south. So their intention is to build a multifamily residential community on the east half of Track 4 and on Track 2, and then Track 4 would be, continued to be owned by the current property owner. This is a conceptual layout that the applicant's engineer prepared. It basically shows if the rezonings approved, what they might do. They're showing 246 homes. There are six homes in, shown in pink. Those are called carriage homes. And this property, the property on the south is located on the north side of Kings Point Lake, and Popeyes and Racetrack is located on the south side. So the, there's a lot of people that walk around that lake. So the buildings shown in orange would be four-story buildings to take advantage of the excellent views that they would have over the lake. The buildings shown in yellow would be three-story buildings, and they would have views over, a lot of them would have views over Graham Swamp. If you go to the west side or the left side of the orange buildings by the lake, that would be a clubhouse. And then the brown buildings shown on there that are relatively small, those would be garages. This is the future land use map that governs all rezonings. The subject property is shown in red there, within the black area. So almost all of it is mixed use. There's just a small portion in the northeast corner that is conservation. So essentially, around the property to the east and northeast is conservation. Everything else is mixed use. This is the existing zoning map, the site, and lands to the north and west are COM3. The lands to the south are multifamily residential 2. And then to the east of the site, that's zone master plan development. However, if you look at that site, it's really encumbered a lot by Graham Swamp. If we go back to the future land use map, you could see all that green conservation area. You really can't develop in there. This is the proposed zoning map, so you could see that we have two multifamily residential 2 sites on there. When you see the crosshatches on the southerly MFR2, that's just an indicator that you need to consider there might be wetlands on that site. And there are some, but they would be primarily staying out of those. These are the five key review criteria that need to be looked at for each rezoning. They're from Section 2.0505 of the Land Development Code. A, must not be in conflict with the public interest. And in this case, in staff's professional opinion, the rezoning would be compatible with other uses on neighboring properties. And the MFR2 district isn't allowed district in the mixed use area on the comprehensive plan. Additionally, B, must be consistent with both the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. The project does meet four goals, policies, or objectives of the comprehensive plan, and if this project is approved, they would go to the site plan process, and at that time, it would need to meet all Land Development Code requirements. C, must not impose a significant liability or hardship on the city. In this case, what it's referring to is like public facilities. Water and sewer are already available to serve the site. The road's already been four-laned out front, and the property owners actually helped pay for that four-laning. And the, even with the project's traffic included for both And the, even with the project's traffic included for both the site that's being rezoned and the portion to the south, the road would still be at level of service C, which is more than acceptable. D must not create an unreasonable hazard or nuisance. In this case, to the east, we've got preserved lands, which basically be Graham Swamp or some of the wetland areas adjacent to that. And then surrounding it, we have high intensity commercial lands, including the Walmart site directly to the north of the project. E must comply with all applicable government standards. So in this case, it would need to meet our standards, anything from Flagler County, as well as other state review agencies in the federal government, let's say Army Corps. You also have Saint John's River Water Management District for environmental permitting. For public participation on this project, the applicant has to mail out a first-class letter to all neighbors within three hundred feet. They did this. The neighborhood meeting was on May eleventh. Staff attended, the developer and his representatives attended, no one from the public attended. Staff has not received any comments from the public so far through the process. And then we've run newspaper ads at least two weeks before each hearing, as well as two signs have been erected, both before the Planning Board and the City Council. The Planning Board reviewed this on May nineteenth at five thirty PM. It was a hybrid meeting. No one attended from the public specifically for the project. The Planning Board voted six-zero to forward this project to the City Council. If this is tonight, we would come back probably in a few weeks for the second hearing on August seventeenth, then the, presuming it's approved, the applicant's engineer would submit either a tier-three master site plan, which is a little more conceptual in nature, or a full engineered tier-three technical site plan. Those would be reviewed by staff initially, then it would go to the Planning Board for recommendation, and finally back to the City Council for any approval of their site plan. The Planning and Land Development Regulation Board determined the proposed rezoning, Application forty-seven thirty-eight, was consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval to City Council to rezone ten point eight five acres from high intensity commercial to multifamily residential two. And the applicant's team is in attendance?
And they have a presentation, City Council, of the applicant.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. For the record, my name is Charlie Faulkner, and congratulations, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Council, for allowing us to speak. This might be a really short presentation.
Charlie, Bill is going to have to turn it for you.
Okay. Okay, as number one, Bill, I think, did a really good job laying out the essence of it, as always. And so I'm going to try to give you the Reader's Digest version and get somebody more interesting to talk to you than me, rather than rehash a lot of stuff. This project's, it's named The Tribute for a very simple reason. This is a tribute to the Old Kings Road and all the history that, that surrounded that road in this area. And you'll find that the Old Kings Road theme runs through this project, sort of like a silver thread. So everything, go ahead. This is the best location in all of Flagler County for an apartment project, apartment development. And as you can see right here, the yellow is what we're asking for, to be rezoned, and the bottom line is, we have no neighbors. They don't even really have road frontage right now. Go ahead. Again, this is the, as far as location, it's a great location. You've got an interstate highway there, an important strategic link on the state highway system, as well as a four-lane city arterial road. To the east, again, it's, you have no neighbors, it's essentially wetland and conservation area, but you're still real close to a lot of things, like the hospital and, and shopping and restaurants, and the beach. This right here is, again, shows the neighbors. The, the dash line in yellow is the property we're asking to be rezoned, and everything literally around it is high intensity commercial, other than to the east, where you have, again, conservation and a flume. The, this, the reason I put this slide together was, you're going to hear people talking about two tracks of land, Track two and Track four. And we're, we're asking to rezone the, basically the eastern half of Track four. Go ahead. So that when we marry it together with Track two, which is already zoned multifamily, we'll be able to create a larger, a larger parcel of land, and with big enough and with the density to support a really truly high-end project with, with really amenitized, good landscaping, good, nice amenities, and, and professional full-time management. This graphic speaks to, again, location, from a pedestrian perspective. It, it's just a great location. You can, you can, with a short trip, bike ride, you can go to Flagler Beach, you can go to the airport or town center, you have access to the Graham Swamp Trail, Lehigh Trail, and you, you've got restaurants and all kinds of supports of facilities really, really close to it. This graphic shows in some amount of detail how we arrive at the density that your land development code allows. You can see Track two is, is in white, tables in white. And your land development code allows twelve units per upland acre, three units per wetland acre. So you've got a hundred and twenty-three, a hundred and twenty-four units already in Track two. And then the table in yellow that, that speaks to the area we're trying to rezone, again, twelve units an acre for upland, three per wetland acre, and together they total two hundred and forty-six. That'll be a maximum amount of units. The design team, I'm not going to take everybody's time up to read this off or really even talk about them. I know all of them except maybe for one, and they are absolute, it's an absolute top-shelf professional team to do a, a top-shelf, really great professional project. Okay, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Neil Stacy. Neil is, you're going to like what you hear, and you're going to like him. He's the developer that'll tell you details about the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie, and thank you, City Council, for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Ravenhill Holdings, I am the representative of, and we are the, different name, but same team who built Tuscan Reserve Apartments here in Palm Coast. If you're not familiar with Tuscan Reserve, it's located a stone's throw from here behind the Tom Gibbs Chevy dealership. It is, at one time, a failed condominium that was built in two thousand and seven, and has been taken back by the bank and essentially set abandoned for a decade. We had the opportunity to purchase that site, renovate the existing units, and take the rest of the land there and construct an additional hundred and fifteen units. So from that experience, we gained a lot of knowledge about Palm Coast, and during that time, we gained a lot of good relationships here in the city. We wanted to take that knowledge and experience and the success that we had at Tuscan Reserve and parlay that into additional development here in town. And we've been looking for what we think is going to be a good opportunity and found this site here, which I think is the, as Charlie said, the best multifamily site available in the city. When I say success at Tuscan Reserve, right now, it was completed in the first quarter of this year, it is a hundred percent leased. We have a ten to fifteen-person waiting list. If a unit becomes available unexpectedly, it's leased within a day. And you almost, you almost can't get the rent high enough, there's so much demand. From an owner's standpoint, that may be okay, but from a city's standpoint, the providing housing, that's not so great. So that's what, hopefully, if we can address that with some additional units, that will help the city without so much rent spike that seems to be happening at this point in time. The supply and demand that we see is somewhat unique because it's coming from two angles. One, our, our units were the first luxury units delivered in Palm Coast since two thousand and nine. Real estate cycles tend to happen like that in a city like Palm Coast. They tend to start in Orlando and then move to the suburbs, then get to Daytona Beach, and finally, if it's still going strong, you get a project here. It may be a, it may be a government-assisted project. If you're, if it goes strong, you get a, one, one nice project at a time. What's happening now is that that cycle has happened. There are now demand for, for these types of apartments, as we've shown at Tuscan Reserve, but in addition to the fact that the time lag has happened, we're seeing additional trends that are happening throughout the state of Florida, where people are moving in from out of state at unprecedented numbers, and they're moving into areas they previously did not move into, such as Palm Coast or other areas. So you're adding additional demand on top of the limited supply. So it's a, it's a double squeeze right now that, that the city is experiencing. And the type of people that are moving in, that I expect would be our resident profile at, at The Tribute, will be very similar to what we have at Tuscan Reserve. So I'll reference Tuscan Reserve a little bit tonight because I think it really does speak to what we're looking to construct here at The Tribute. So who, who do we expect to live here? At Tuscan Reserve, the average income of our residents is eighty-eight thousand five hundred a year, which, as you can see, is twenty-four percent higher than the households located in a five-mile radius. Now, in apartments' terms, this is really high. A typical apartment community's average household income is somewhere in the forties, maybe fifty thousand. This is extremely high. The typical resident is, is older that we have seen there. In fact, when we put out a survey, when people were coming to move in, we asked them what their occupation was, and retired is actually the most checked box on the list. So these are people who are now able to retire, move to Florida, and they're choosing Palm Coast as their, as their place to at least try for a while and see if this is an area that they want to put down roots, because there's not a lot of houses to move into either. So it gives the option for them to, to test it out this way. And in fact, many of the people are building homes while they're living at Tuscan Reserve here in Palm Coast. Those that are working are working in the healthcare industry, but also they have the ability to work out of their homes, and they have home offices. And one of the things that we like to provide in many of our units is a separate office and a separate space outside of the bedroom to provide that amenity for them, and people really do seem to enjoy that aspect of it as a separate area. And, and the advent of working from home, obviously, is something that's also contributing to the, to the migration trends that we're seeing. It's a new trend, but we expect it to continue and accelerate as well. And as, and the last one, as you can see, is that a lot of people are not just typically coming from the young side and moving in to the apartments from the local area, they are moving from out of state, which is contributing to the other demographics that we are seeing. This slide here is just to reorient you to where we are. Again, the, the southern portion that has already been zoned was zoned three years ago for a government-assisted program. Those projects typically, when I say program, community, those projects are typically of that size. Those are the way the allocations are typically allocated at the hundred to a hundred and twenty units mark. For a market rate project to be built to the standards that would attract the type of resident profile that we had at Tuscan Reserve and therefore here, to be able to construct the amenities that we would like to do, it does require inefficiencies, and that's the reason for we're asking for the additional zoning to get the two hundred and forty-six units. This is a conceptual plan that we are looking at right now. This is just a rezone at this stage, it's not a, a site plan, so this is likely to change in the specifics, but not in the intention of what we intend to build. The, the western boundary of the northern portion of Track four, you can see is labeled as what is the historic Old Kings Highway. This Old Kings Highway, I will speak to a little bit here, and then we also have another speaker who's going to speak to the, to the historic nature of this highway, is the reason we call it The Tribute. We plan to work with an archaeological team, to work with Tallahassee, to preserve this. You can even notice in the entry-exit loop towards the project there, we have a visitor's parking area so that the city population can come and, and see a kiosk that we're going to put up to give a little bit of history of what this road meant at one time, and one time meaning several hundred years. You will also note that this site, one of the nice things about it is that it is low density. It allows for a lot of outdoor amenities. The beautiful pristine lake that we have in the southeastern corner, we intend to put as many units with as many views there that we can, as well as units along the wetlands, so that everybody has a nice view. It is Florida, we do want to have a, a use of these outdoor amenities, and we plan to amenitize it. One of the things we had at Tuscan Reserve was a pier leading to a seating gazebo. We plan to do the same thing out into this beautiful lake here that you can see, against, additionally, with some additional seating area around that. The landscaping is very important to us as well. It's, it's one of those things that, it costs a little bit of money, but not so much, that we don't want to do it. At Tuscan Reserve, we had, by code, to put in ninety-five trees, and we put in two hundred and forty-five, about two and a half times as were required by code, just to provide that sense of community. And community is what we're trying to provide to our residents. It is more than just being in your own four walls in your unit, we want to be able to provide amenities outside and inside. If you can go to the next slide. This is an example of the architectural style. These are obviously just examples of the type that we'll be looking at. The Tribute Road, the Old Kings Highway, was built back in the, in the seventeen hundreds, and it was a trail that the, that the British used during and before the Revolutionary War. So our architecture, we want to do to be consistent with the theme that we're trying to preserve, will be along this old Florida theme. So you can see some styles here that we plan to incorporate, some large windows, porches, the white battening board siding with some, some black trim. Those are the types of details we, we intend to bring to this site to tie the site together. Now, if you can go back one. And, and the last thing I wanted to mention here is that along, one of the challenges that we have is that we do have a little bit of a jog to get to where we show our clubhouse right here, where we want to have the infinity-edge pool overlooking the lake. So we'll change this a little bit, I mentioned this will probably adjust. That pond will probably shift and move a little bit, and, and we're going to have the, the land and the ability to create a, a drive back through there. I, I like to use the analogy- I like to use the analogy of Magnolia Lane at Augusta National. We want to create this nice tree, beautiful setting, to where you kind of drive through, and then you see this cabin back in the woods that you're approaching to, again, make it feel like a sense that it's very special. Again, if we want to provide housing for the type of resident that we expect will want this, we need to provide all the amenities and the ambiance that they would expect. And these are just some of the amenities that I've been mentioning along the way that we can read later. So, we've added some pictures here. This is the Tuscan Reserve project. If you're not familiar with it, it's just down the road here. There's a picture of the pier with the seating gazebo out into the lake. The pool with the landscaping. Here's an example of the private garages here. And just some nighttime pictures of how we create living areas for our residents to enjoy. And I included this slide here just to show that one of the challenges we had at Tuscan Reserve is that it was an already-built project in terms of infrastructure, so we were somewhat constrained in how we would have designed it. And it was a tight site as well. But we still were able to create trails and a putting green and other amenities here at Dog Park. And we'll have more opportunity to do that at the Tribute because it will be twice the number of units, but three times the land. People ask what makes for a luxury apartment, and some of these things are fairly standard in today's market. Some of the things that we like to do, just as our philosophy, would be larger space. We believe that an extra 100 square feet per unit to provide large, oversized walk-in closets in the bedroom, pantries in the kitchen, coat closets are very important for someone to have a home and not just an apartment. These things are standard in what we build, and we will continue to do that here. We also provide things that are important for lifestyle, but that a typical renter shopping would not ask for, such as additional sound penetrations in the ceiling-floor assemblies in between the walls so you don't hear people walking above you as much or hear your neighbors' conversation. These are the types of things people don't ask for, you don't get any more rent for, but they're happy that they exist when they live in your community and will likely lead to longer-term rent tenants. Okay. And here, just a few more shots of what, again, Tuscan Reserve looks like on an interior appointment. And I'm going to turn it over now to Dana St. Clair, who is going to give a couple of minutes overview on the Tribute Old Kings Highway.
Sir, before you give it to him, I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, of course.
See if I get it right.
Okay.
I heard you say that it's going to be basically low-density, correct?
Yeah, 12 units per acre is a density.
It's going to be 246 units and 372 parking spaces on 10 acres with two four-story buildings and four buildings of three-story high of 144 units. You also kind of led to say that was affordable, even though most of the people that lives on what you compared to has got an average income of $88,000. So, basically, it's going to be luxury workforce?
No, I don't think so. I think that we're trying to build the highest-quality apartment community in Palm Coast. And the total size of the project will be almost 23 acres.
I'll have a few more comments, but not towards you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, my name is Dana St. Clair, and I've been your unofficial archaeologist for about 30 years. And it's a pleasure to meet you. And, Mr. Mayor, congratulations on your new appointment. There have been some earlier comments about the location of this proposed development 400 feet off of the Old Kings Road, when in fact, the road or the development is exactly on the Old Kings Road, the original alignment of the Old Kings Road, which is practically unique, or at least the sections of the Old Kings Road are unique to the city of Palm Coast. Palm Coast was established and incorporated in the 20th century, but your history is much older than that. And this is testament to that early history, which dates to about two-and-a-half centuries ago. That original alignment of the road was developed during the British colonial period, which the city of Palm Coast, what is now the land that comprises the city of Palm Coast, was part of the East Colony of the East Florida Colony of the British Crown. We all know about the 13 colonies up north, but East Florida, including the area of Palm Coast, was the 14th colony, and West Florida was the 15th. The only reason that we don't really read about those in the history books is because when the fires of Independence were burning in Philadelphia and Boston, Florida east and west colonies, the 14th and 15th colonies, were comfortably loyal to King George III. So, we were a Tory nation down here. But during that time, in the early 1700s, the British Crown decided to build a major highway, the first of its kind in America. It was built from the Lake Mary's River down to New Smyrna to feed and supply what, at that time, was the most ambitious attempt by the British to colonize the entire North and Central and South American continents. But it exists, and the city of Palm Coast has done an extraordinary job of preserving it through your historic preservation requirements and a lot of the developments. And the road in its original alignment runs through the property and north and south of it, although the altered version of that bends out about 400 feet to the west. So, what is particularly interesting and unique about this resource isn't that the developer is planning on preserving it, he's also planning on sharing it as well, too. And that's one of the reasons why I'm involved. I've worked up and down the Old Kings Road in Flagler County and the city of Palm Coast for a long time, but the alignment there is almost near original and worthy of interpretation and also worthy of sharing it with the community of Palm Coast, to help them understand just how rich the city's history is. And there were so many important things that happened off of this road before and after it. But I'm particularly impressed with the development in the community amenities, and not just for the residents of the community, but also for the residents of the city, that will be allowed to understand better and share in the rich history that constitutes and characterizes the city of Palm Coast. It truly is an expression of authenticity and one that is unique to this area. Thank you very much.
For the record, again, my name's Charlie Faulkner. Lassiter &amp; Associates is probably one of the largest traffic engineering firms in this area down in Daytona Beach. We went to them and asked them to analyze what this rezoning would mean. And the slide you're looking at right now is really just kind of like the bottom line. Currently, the property we're asking to be rezoned is zoned high-intensity commercial. It's vested to a .2 FAR from previous agreements, legal agreements. And what that yields is almost 95,000 square feet of a shopping center. And when you use the LTG generation tables, that translates to, that shopping center would generate about 4,600 daily trips, 4,600 daily trips, and about 400 peak-hour trips. If we're successful in rezoning and you run the same analysis, these 123 apartment buildings that will result as of this rezoning, they will generate 670 daily trips instead of 4,600 and 54 peak-hour trips instead of 414. Go ahead. This next slide, it gets like really, really complex, and I can wear you out with it if you want to wade through it, or after our presentation, if you want to drill in deeper, I'll come up and be happy to discuss it with you, what all these numbers mean. But the bottom line is, if you look at today's trips on that road and you compare it to a level of Service C trips that that road can handle, all of the existing trips today, plus this project's trips added to it, you'll still have 75% of that level of service vacant. So, this is going to have a positive impact on that road, not a negative impact. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jay. And I would like to point out two things, a little prelude. This is not, this project and what this rezoning, what we're trying to accomplish, is not only consistent with your comp plan, it's actually required by your comp plan. You need, it requires a residential component, and in this area, currently, there isn't one. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Good evening. Jay Livingston with Livingston &amp; Sore. Charlie and I represent the property owner Flagler Pioneer Group, LLC, and we've been working closely with the developer to accomplish this rezoning, to expand the footprint of what's currently multifamily, the parts of the South, so there's a big enough project to do something that Raven Sales Group wants to do, that is, the kind of high-quality apartment as opposed to the affordable housing project that the original rezoning was done to accomplish. I know this has been a long presentation. I don't want to wear you out, so I'm going to hit the highlights of this. As Mr. Faulkner pointed out, this is actually a necessary component to your comprehensive plan. This slide here shows a snapshot from your future land use map. The circle that's on there is a designation of a Village Center. The policies in your comp plan, and you can go to the next slide, the policies in the comp plan that are relevant to this project is, first, we're in the mixed-use designation. So, all the red on the map, which is essentially the entire stretch of Old Kings Road from 100 to Palm Coast Parkway, almost all of it is mixed-use, is designed in your own comp plan through its policies to be a mixture of uses. You know, it's the kind of, the designation speaks for itself. It's supposed to include working opportunities, shopping opportunities, recreational opportunities, potential school opportunities, as well as residential opportunities, and that's what currently is missing. Go to the next slide. In the Village Center, which this project is within that circle, so this is, you know, kind of a subset of the mixed-use designation, there's supposed to be even more of a mix. And we've obviously added one component to that with the existing multifamily sites to the South that we're adding to. But one of the policies in Policy 1.1.2.6B, it lays out kind of mixture of uses that are required within this Village Center designation, and one of those is a 25% multifamily residential use within that Village Center. So, we're kind of meeting that standard by accomplishing this rezoning in this project. Go to the next slide. Another important part of the comprehensive plan that needs to be kept in mind is that we do need diverse housing types. Single-family lots is the predominant housing type. Your comprehensive plan, the Goal 3.4 and Policy 3.4, .1.1, are very clear that we have way too many quarter-acre lots in Palm Coast, and we need to diverse, get a more diverse housing stock, including, as I highlighted in the policy, multifamily uses. This meets that standard. More importantly, though, it also meets the element summary of this policy, which is that it's, the mixed-use area is supposed to provide residential uses with a nice pedestrian network, so there's walking opportunities. And as the slide that Mr. Faulkner showed you at the beginning of the presentation, this project fits nicely into what is one of the greatest amenities of the city, which is our trail network. We already have a sidewalk system that goes up Old Kings Road that was installed when the project, property was, when the road was realigned and the road was four-laned, and as the map that Mr. Faulkner showed ties in to everything. The map can only go so far, but in fact, the wonderful thing about Palm Coast is you can literally walk to the end of the pier and then all the way to Pellicia Creek, and you obviously have to cross some roads on the way, but the network is continuous. The trail network is continuous from the pier all the way to the north boundary of the county, and that's a wonderful thing that the city has. The final goal that we're promoting in the comprehensive plan and the consistency with the comprehensive plan is promoting cultural resources. Mr. St. Clair did a good job at explaining that. I put this slide up there because, one, I highlighted, I zoomed in on the site plan. The overall site plan, it's hard to see the like linear park proposal that they're talking about that's going to denote and interpret and mark the Old Kings Trail. That will be accessible to the public, so not just to the residents of this project. But I also wanted to show you just an example of where the Old Kings Road location was. This map is, this map highlight on the right side is actually a map from the late 1860s, I mean, from the late 1800s, around 1860, I think. And it shows the location of Old Kings Road. It shows what the Halifax River was before they dug the Intercoaster Waterway, the Timoca River, Smith Creek, so you can see things that we're so familiar with in that location. That's essentially where we are, is where that linear park will be. And so, by enhancing that, which is now just the asphalt from the old roadway, we'll be promoting the cultural resource of the city in furtherance of Goal 4.5 of your comprehensive plan. And I'll go through this really quick, but I think this is really important to understand. You know, whenever you're rezoning a property, especially when you're taking it from a non-residential use to residential use, the one question is, what are we giving up? Are we moving to a land use that maybe we don't want to, not because the housing isn't needed or the project isn't needed, but because we're changing the zoning and we're giving up entitlements that the city may need? In order to make sure that we weren't giving up entitlements that the city may need in the future, we, I did an analysis of the entire stretch of Old Kings Road from State Road 100 to Palm Coast Parkway. I excluded the Walmart parcel, as well as a project just north of Town Center Boulevard on the east side, on the west side of Old Kings Road, because that particular developer I represent and we're potentially going to change the zoning there. And so, I didn't want to include that in my analysis because that would be disingenuous if that zoning is changed. So, excluding this project, this site is also not included in the analysis, and the Walmart parcel and the property north of Town Center Boulevard, that's about 83 acres that I excluded from the analysis. So, those entitlements are also there. We broke it down. We have four zoning districts, COM 2, COM 3, Office 1, and Office 2. This is a breakdown of the total square footage, and then, if you can go to the next slide. Taking that, what's permitted under your comprehensive plan, the available floor area ratios of what exists within the office designation, as the first slide, the remaining acreage that we have on Old Kings Road would allow us to build 19 city halls. So, we have, even with this project built, even with Walmart excluded from the analysis, even with the office and the commercial from the other project I mentioned, that 83 acres taken out, we could build 19 city halls along Old Kings Road in terms of office space. Go to the next slide. And I use this one because it's right over there and everybody's familiar with it, but City Center, which is around the corner, whichever direction we are. City Center, which is around the corner, from whichever direction we are, and under the existing entitlements within that area, we can build 15 city centers, so substantial amounts of office space is, would be available. Go to the next slide. As far as the commercial space, COM, the COM 2 and COM 3, the remaining acreage would allow us to build five Alusha malls, which I think is probably too much, and, the next one, or we could build 12 tanger outlets. So in terms of what are we giving up, we're not really giving up much. We're meeting a important policy element of the comprehensive plan by bringing this residential component into the mixed-use district, and we're not giving up anything because we still have significant entitlements for commercial and office uses that will come into the future once these rooftops go up. You know, one of the reasons why the development along Old Kings Road has not happened, because it's been predominantly commercial and office, is because that's driven by rooftops. And even the Walmarts parcel to the north, which hopefully one day will be developed, is going to be driven by the number of bodies in the city and the number of rooftops, and this will further that goal. And I ended it with a picture of the project that Mr. Stacy talked about in the site plan.
Before you go, I just want to make sure that I ask you a question, sir. Just, I want to make sure that I heard it right. I heard you say that we have too many single-family homes in Palm Coast, we need somewhat diversity. I just want to make sure those are your words.
I, I was quoting your own comprehensive plan. So that's what your, that's, those are the policies and goals.
I just wanted to know that, those are your words.
Yes, sir. But that's what the comprehensive plan states when they did an analysis of the city for the future planning, they determined that we do not have a diverse enough housing stock. We have too many quarter-acre lots is actually what the comprehensive plan says.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Does that conclude the presentation at this time?
Yes, sir. We're here for questions, and the applicants here for questions as well.
So I would ask our city council to begin their questions.
I don't necessarily have many questions. The, if I'll go through my notes here, and going through the information that we've been provided. I'd like to first note that there was no public pushback during any of the meetings, that's correct? There was no one in attendance?
That's correct, sir.
Understood. So that's my first point. It does seem consistent with our future land use map, as noted by staff, and it did go through planning. I do, I'm a fan of our trail system in Palm Coast. We have a tremendous amenity that I hope everyone gets a chance to utilize, but I actually, from Colbert Lane, I can take the Lehigh Trailhead over and across Old Kings and all throughout the city. So having an apartment complex on our trailhead system, a big advantage to me as far as desirability. It also adds diversity to our housing index, like the applicant stated, but also our staff. I am aware that we will still need student housing and affordable housing with JU and UNF, and the expansion of Advent Health and Florida Hospital System, bringing jobs and college curriculum to our community, we're going to need those additional types of housing as well. And going through the last year traffic analysis for posterity, their basic Too Long Didn't Read version was that with the changing of zoning, that it would quote easily be able to maintain a Level C level of service. So that seemed to be kosher with me. I wasn't able to find anything that immediately stuck out, but I would like to default back to my council members and see if they have anything for discussion.
Yes, I would like to add a couple more things, if you don't mind. With all due respect, this is anything but affordable housing, and workforce housing. Let's not kid each other here, okay? And definitely, in my opinion, when you have 246 units and 10 acres, it's anything but low density, once again, but that's not the problem. I, and I'm not questioning the quality of this, remember, I'm not questioning the quality, because the quality, for what I see, it's going to be good. I'm questioning the density. I, the people out there, they come to me, and they're afraid of overbuilding. They're saying the city is being overbuilt. I'm more worried about the populated part of it, the population coming in. And once again, I want to be clear, I'm talking about quantity, not diversity, because I want that to be clear, if anybody's hearing me, okay? Going from country to multifamily, this is going to be four-story buildings and three-story And like Mr. Livingston said, this is, we have too many one-family homes, need diversity. In my opinion, we do not have one, too many family, one-family homes in Palm Coast, but then again, so in my opinion, that's what I wanted to say. And, and by the way, thank you Dana for the beautiful history that you gave us on Old Kings Road. That was good. It's always good to know, because it's beautiful. We have a beautiful history here. Let's keep it that way. And like I said, this is anything but affordable housing. And those are my comments for now.
Councilman Danko.
Terrific presentation. Obviously, you built some high-quality stuff. It does bring some much-needed housing to Palm Coast, and it looks to me like it still leaves a lot of area for commercial development. Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Has there been a project that has had a historical element like this one before? We often talk about the city of Palm Coast being, you know, the newest city in town, so we're at 21-plus years. Has anyone ever done a project that looked at the historical content? I'm not sure you call it preservation, but...
Yeah, actually, our land development code requires a Phase 1 cultural resource investigation for the sites, and if we do have sites that have archaeological value, and Mr. St. Clair has done several of our sites around the city of Palm Coast that historically have historical sites. Long Creek is one of them. There is actually a wharf there, that part of our park that's being preserved, and have some information about it, and enhancing that. There's been, you know, some of our DRIs out west, Neoga Lakes, Old Brick Township, have a lot of cultural resources out there. The Old Brick Township and some of the agreements are for preservation of those. The development of Old Kings Road South is another example on the top of my head that has some really significant archaeological resources. There's old middens there from the Native Americans. So yes, yes, we look at that at every site plan that comes in, or we're a project to look at the cultural resources.
So to educate me, if the zoning is, remains as it is for high-intensity commercial, would the historical component be treated the same way, or how does that work?
You know, it's, and maybe, you know, Mr. St. Clair can add to it, because he is a certified archaeologist, but typically, you know, when you do a Phase 1 and you have some cultural resources, if it's significant in nature, you know, if it can be included in the historic preservation of natural resources, I can't remember the term, but, you know, some of these cultural resources aren't major in nature, and they don't need to be preserved, and I would think that this one, most likely, and maybe he can correct me, if a commercial development came in, I don't think necessarily they would have to do anything with it. And I think this applicant that's here proposing to preserve it, I think he, that team is going above and beyond.
Thank you, Mr. Toner. Another question, maybe for the presenter. You mentioned a term of an average income of $88,000. I assume that represents a range of incomes, some lower, some higher. Can you speak to that just for a minute for me?
Yes, I can. This is based on the residents who applied to Tuscan Reserve. They fill out how much they make, and then when they, when they fill out an application, you actually give back the information as to do they financially qualify. So these are, these are incomes, and in some ways, it's a little bit low, because a lot of people are retired, and they're not working. So it's a high-class resident that is, that is moving in, they're affluent, they, I think, will help build the demand for the rooftops for more commercial in the area as well, and be positive, positive residents for the city.
So this form of housing would be suitable to our, for our healthcare workers, our first responders, all of those people that we like to include in this discussion? What's your experience over in the other?
Well, we are getting healthcare workers at Tuscan Reserve, too. The fact that we have this high average income doesn't mean that we have a high bar. We have, we have our standard application, it just so happens that a lot of people who are moving in are inordinately high-income, that we're seeing right now. And that's just trends that we're seeing throughout cities like this in the state of Florida. It's a unique time right now.
Thank you.
For posterity, just for clarification, that's under the, under the rooftop income, right? So the $80,000 would be total for the family that's moving into that household?
Correct.
Okay, understood. Okay, household income, understood. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or discussion from city council at this time?
None.
So I would open it up to public comment now. I would invite any members of the public to please come forward. You have three minutes, so please state your name, and you will begin.
All right, fellas. Virginia, I just want to say thank you for all the FOIA requests you've been processing for us so timely, it's incredible on your part.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't catch your name.
I wasn't speaking to you. My name's Charles Bowman.
Please, please direct your comments to me, though, thank you.
Yeah, got a question for you.
And I'm sorry, I still didn't catch your name?
David, don't act like you don't know me. Charles Bowman, Republican Liberty Caucus, Flagler County. Good? All right. I'm listening, and we just covered a lot of information. This is a Danko kind of, I can't, I can't make this go up. Can you hear me? All right. Five of you responded to the question, as I heard it, about ex parte communications, and I heard four no's. Is this correct? No, 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 yes. Correct? Was the communication that you received regarding this project personal? Obviously, because you've been a mayor for 15 minutes, right? The ex parte communication, would you like to elaborate on it? Mr. Livingston is the registered agent of, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Let's just narrow it down to SC Klein Construction. What is your communication with Mr. Livingston, specifically?
Sir, if you just give your comments, we'll answer your questions at the end of your comments.
Is it possible to do a FOIA request on that communication?
Absolutely, there'd be a public record. Sir, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Concerning the other corporations, which I just pulled from these individuals, Charlie Faulkner, Neil Stacy, Dana St. Clair, Jay Livingston, can the city state what its communications and all relationships prior are with the corporations? If I provide a list of the corporations to the city, you can answer it after the fact.
Again, sir, we'll try to answer your questions when you're done with your statement, and you can respond to any public records requests that you may have.
Last question, 30 seconds. The corporation, just to narrow it down for me so I don't absolutely inundate Virginia, is OKR Investments, the primary corporation, and you can answer that after the fact. And it is not SC Klein Construction in any form or fashion. You can answer that after the fact. All right? Appreciate you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'm Carol Baca, Mother Elizabeth, and I'd like to address the situation here of the building of the tribute complex that's just been presented, and to open it up to the consideration of additional historical inputs that could partnership within the community to make this building have some things that are not yet in the planning. And I would bring this to you from my experience of having a grant from the Florida Historical Division, and my knowledge as a medical ethnomusicologist, specifically dealing with the past of the people that traveled along the King's Highway, and those people who perhaps are even buried under where this tribute would be built, were people that came here as part of the New Smyrna Colony under Governor Turnbull's bringing them from parts of Europe, where they were not allowed by their practice of religion to have their family homes, and they risked their lives in 1768 to come here on seven ships of what is often termed the Greek landing. And those people were not slaves, they were considered to be indentured servants, and they really didn't get the deal that they were supposed to get. So using that information, if the tribute could do all the good things that have been stated that it could do, could we investigate this deal that went sour on these immigrants that were more numerous than the Northern Colony, and of which I have some personal prayer connections to? Can we utilize the historical grants that our governor has put out to look at this population that has not been fairly given its historical situation? They've been called Menorkin, well, there's other things, but there's things to look into that could perhaps make partnerships, that could pay for housing for our medical workers, our firefighters, to do good for something in the past that maybe wasn't as good.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Lewis, Palm Coast. A couple of comments on this proposed development. We keep, during the, during the recent campaign, a lot of talk was, was mentioned about how we're all commercial, I mean, no commercial, all residential, the property tax base is based on all of its homeowners, and that we keep chipping away at our commercial developments by doing exactly what's being proposed here, converting commercial to residential. I don't understand why that's a good idea based upon everything that was discussed during the campaign about getting more commercial, big commercial, into this city. The second thing I wanted, I don't understand how a gated apartment complex can be a historical tribute to the general residents of Palm Coast. I mean, I understand people that live there will understand they live in the tribute, but how does that benefit the rest of the citizens of Palm Coast as far as the historical benefit of the Old Kings Road? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Denise Calderwood, Palm Coast resident. I just want to recognize Charlie Faulkner. Did he just leave? Oh, Charlie? Charlie is a very responsible developer, and he always puts a fantastic team together, so I'm sure he's done his full research, and, you know, Councilman, Charlie is the one who led the Town Center development, and Charlie, I'm still glad that you're still here, along with Sam and Klein Construction, you know, those guys developed Palm Coast, and they're the ones who even shut down Old Kings Road and made a political statement at one time. So for those of you who want to talk about historical, they are the guys. They're the ones who developed and designed Palm Coast and Town Center that you have right now in City Hall. So they put a good team together, Jay Livingston, you know, does their research. What Carol, Sister Elizabeth said is true, you know, as far as the historical context of the road, it is there, it's important to all of us in Flagler County, but we also have the Old Brick Road that's covered up as well, so... So, and Grand Haven does, is a gated community that has a public park inside there, and we use our park impact fees for that. So, we have those kind of relationships in every project that we have done. So, I support this idea. It is needed. You know, let all the people who have the money put gates around it, and the rest of us can, you know, be like we did in the hammock, you know, when Hammock Dooms came in. You know, my 3,800-square-foot house that I had was considered low income at the time when Hammock Dooms came in. And I was part of Sid Crosby's Raiders, you know, who tried to keep Bobby Ginn out because he bankrupted our community. I mean, not our community. Well, he did technically, too. But other communities in South Carolina. So, you know, we've had developers who have taken advantage of us. Charlie and his team is not one of them. They've always done good stand-up work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I promise I'm not trying to blow you all up here. It's just a battery. My name is Leslie Johnson, and I'm here in Palm Coast. I would like to say that from what I can see, what I can gather here, the quality is excellent. I really like what I've seen. However, my concern is we have talked an awful lot about low income. We've talked an awful lot about work... What did you call it? Workforce housing. We've talked an awful lot about a lot of people coming here to Palm Coast. My question is, where are they going to work? I did a little bit of research prior to coming here, and the minimum wage here in Florida is $8.85. Now, this is going to be $88,000 a year for the median income for these people to live there. What about the average Joe? What about the people who need work? What about the people who cannot live there? It's... Right now, you've got the supply and demand. Right now, you've got it. But later on down the road, what's going to happen then? And I'm really concerned about that. I'm really concerned, as Ms. Crawford had said earlier, about the homeless camps that have been built up around town. We've seen them. We've known about them. They need places to go. Okay, that's great. Let's put them in a low-income housing. Let's put them in workforce housing. Where are they going to work? If you take away all of the business opportunity, all of the business zoning, where are these people going to work? It's all the question I have. Okay? Otherwise, I love the opportunity. I really love the history. Really love that opportunity to learn more about history. I love history myself. So, I just would like that one question answered, if we can get that one. Thank you for your consideration. I'll leave the next minute for you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. First of all, congratulations to Mr. Mayor, Mr. Branquino. Great job filling in during that period. My name is Mark Langello. I'm 41-year resident of this community. I'm also a developer by trade and a general contractor. I don't know the developer at all. I actually never met them. I've never talked to anybody on their design team about this particular project, just sitting in the audience, listening. I have a couple of comments. First of all, I'm also a member of... A city member of the Flagler County Planning Board. So, I know a little bit about planning. And, Mr. Branquino, I heard the same thing you heard. I heard 246 units with 10 acres, but then they said there was more. I know your staff over here, they're very sharp, and they're not going to let 24 units per acre. I think your maximum is 12. So, I'm sure that they have an explanation for that. And I'm sure it's more than... And I think the gentleman said there was another 11 acres or something. So, I'd like to get that explanation, too. But outside of that, multifamily is an important element to a vibrant community. You can't have a monolithic community of just houses. As a matter of fact, part of the purpose of what they're doing is to allow people to come into this community, to help serve the community, that may not have another place. For instance, traveling nurses. These people come for a year. They need a place. They need a good place to stay that's near the hospital. You've got people who are managers of businesses, doctors who move here, people who move here and trying to, like they said, may want to have a place to stay to see if they like the community while they're building their home. There's a lot of need for this type of community. Also, when you have multifamily, people think that's a... This is causing a lot of extra development or, you know, they think it's hurting your environment. Actually, it does the reverse. When you put 246 units on 20 acres or whatever that would be, that's far less of an impact to our environment than if you put 246 units on a bunch of individual lots. That's called urban sprawl. And while we all want to have single-family houses in our community, we don't... We wouldn't profess to have any monolithic, like a whole bunch of apartments. But that actually is far less a destructive element to the environment than a bunch of single-family houses. Also, people want to live... Some people want to live in a community where they don't take care of the outside of the house, and they want to live in an apartment community. They want to live close to other people. So, it allows the freedom of choice. So, I would encourage... This project seems good on every phase. I would like to get an explanation of the density. But other than that, I would encourage you to approve the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
James Vincent. This is a nice project. My problem is that I don't think these gentlemen have driven across town. Their presentation on the traffic analysis is just not reality. Traffic across town from Pompos Parkway, Bel Air, Route 100. Our roads cannot just handle... Cannot handle the traffic. Whether you build apartments, duplexes, or single-family houses, we just don't have the roads to handle all these people coming in. Just... We just really need to stop overbuilding. I know plenty of people who moved up from Fort Lauderdale, Melbourne, because it was overcrowded, overdeveloped, and we're getting to be that way. We do need to have, like other people have said, more businesses, more opportunities for jobs, and create tax. Our roads, again, cannot handle the traffic people we have. Old King's Road north of Parkway is five years behind of being expanded like it should have been, and it's already tied up now. It's a nightmare. And traffic coming across town in that area is just terrible. And they're saying that, oh, there's four-lane highways down at this end of town. Yeah, there is. But it's also congested down there, and Old King's goes to one lane. So, an alternative road is being restricted because of one lane. We need better roads before we can build more housing in this area.
Thank you. Are there... Next speaker, please.
Greg Blasey, President and CEO of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber. Didn't plan on speaking about this, but it's worth saying that I feel like I sat in the back of the room and heard one presentation, and maybe half of the people in the room didn't listen to it. We've had a transportation scientist, an engineer, come out and study the traffic. The levels pass. So, that's number one. That's a fact, and that's something that we can go back and look at and have more of a conversation about. We did with one other project before this group one time. Second thing is, I really commend these, this team. I've met one of them one time. At least they're not coming in here and they're faking it. You know, they're saying, hey, we've got a target market. It costs a lot of money to build this property, and we think that we can fill it with the people that want to live in there. And so, for the affordable housing comment, I agree with you, ma'am. I'm desperately concerned about affordable housing. But this isn't the project for it. We've been working on some things with the county and Affordable Housing Ordinance, but the cost of building and development, not only in the city of Palm Coast, but elsewhere, is increasing dramatically, and we're adding impact fees on top of that in school concurrency and proportionate fair share. So, I think this is a really good project. I think it's thoughtful. I get the concerns about the, you know, the height of it, the density of it. But in order... It's a trade-off. You've got to have some of those things to save some of the other stuff, I believe. Last point about the switching from commercial or, yeah, commercial to what we're doing here. It's a part of a larger scheme. This is one small piece of what we're looking at up and down Old King's Road, and that is going to include, as you heard, 12 tanger outlets, 177 Walmarts, or whatever the number is that you came up with. But the reality is, there's a place for that. It's not this place on this piece right now. I think combining these two makes a lot of sense, make one contiguous neighborhood, and it's going to be very well done. And I've only been in this community for a year, but as far as I know, Mr. Faulkner's reputation is beyond reproach in terms of development. So, he's got the right team, you know, with Sands and some of the other folks. But I just had to come up here and speak my mind that it's not okay to come up here and say, well, across town, the traffic is this. We have a traffic, a transportation analysis. So, with that having been said, I support it, and I urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Toby Tobin, a 21-year resident of Palm Coast. Most of you probably know that I'm a strong advocate of affordable housing and workforce housing for employed people. But... And I think we've been conflating workforce housing and affordable housing with apartments in general. Apartments are not all affordable housing, nor are they intended to be. Any more than single-family homes can vary from affordable levels to very high-end. We have an issue here in town of really being unable to afford to build affordable housing. So, you can attack affordable housing a couple of different ways. One is try to find a way to build less expensive housing. We seem to be up against a wall with that approach. Another approach is to raise the average income, because that's the other side of the affordable housing formula. If you have a higher income in the area, they can afford the higher-priced homes. And I think what's going on in Town Center with MedNext and JU is so exciting. We are on the verge of becoming a healthcare Mecca, and we're going to have literally hundreds of doctors, nurses, healthcare professionals, staff members, faculty in town. This would be a beautiful place for these folks to live. So, just please, when you make your decision here, don't conflate that this is supposed to be workforce housing or affordable housing. I don't believe... I don't think I heard that in their presentation. It might have been inferred, but I don't think I heard it. And I don't think they intend it to be that, not at an $80,000 average income level. I support the project wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would wish to comment at this time? Please state your name for us.
I'm Paula Lewis. I live on Cottonwood Court. When I moved here, I saw a beautiful community that I could live in and I could grow in. And I'm not Benjamin Buttons. I'm not going to take and age backwards. I need to go shopping. There isn't that much shopping. I see by this plan, the Walmart that was supposed to be there is not going to be there. There was supposed to be a BJ's here at one point in time. It's not here. There was supposed to be a Costco here at one point of time. It's not here. When we get older, we don't need to be driving one-half hour plus to go to Ormond Beach, Daytona, to go to St. Augustine, or even further yet, to Jacksonville, because Jacksonville is where there are two Costcos. This is ridiculous for any community to be able to exist with minimum facilities to be able to shop and be able to provide for your home. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you.
So, I don't like that. And, oh, one other thing. One other thing. When you go into the downtown area, quote, of Palm Coast, there are no residences there. There's a lot of shopping, kind of, and office buildings. There aren't residences. What you're starting there is a lot of residents, and you're, once again, truncating the ability to have places to shop and do business.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Lisa Perkins. I'm not in agreement with this. My issue is, we have things that we need to address as it is in the city. One of them would be our water. We have a lot of issues with our water. I hear people complaining about the smell, the way it looks, and our water bills are outrageous as well. We need to address that. And where are the jobs? We keep talking about jobs, you know, that may be coming here. We need to see the jobs first for the people that are already here, and those don't exist at this time. And like they said, the shopping and stuff, we need those commercial, the tax base from that, from the commercial development. So, I'm not in agree with this either. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to come forward and speak to the issue? Seeing none?
I believe the applicant would like an opportunity to either answer questions or provide additional information. Is that correct?
Good evening. Jay Livingston, again for the record. I want to clear up a few things. There seemed to be some confusion, and that's partly because of the history of the land use here. We're not developing 246 units on 10 acres, nor are we doing affordable housing. What we're doing is we're adding a multifamily component to an existing parcel of land that was zoned multifamily. So, the southern portion, so everything kind of, the pond to the... The pond that's shown there to the lake is already zoned multifamily. That was rezoned specifically for an affordable housing project. There was a contract to get lottery money from the Florida Housing Coalition Finance Corporation, I mean. And they went through three cycles of that for three years. They did not get the funding, and so that particular developer left. That was the affordable part of it. This particular project is adding additional land. The total acreage of the project is 22.18 acres, and that is about 11 dwelling units per acre, 11.9 dwelling units per acre based upon the total acreage. So, it's not a 10-acre project, nor is it an affordable housing project. It's an addition to what was supposed to be an affordable housing project that was a little over 11 acres, and total will be 22 acres. That's, like I said, 11.9 dwelling units per acre. Just to put it into context, we checked the maximum acreage permitted in unincorporated Orange County, where you all know there's a higher density. Their maximum density permitted there is 60 units per acre. So, you know, in terms of low density, high density, this is relatively low density for this type of a project, as is indicated by the amount of open space shown in the site plan. So, Mr. Branquino, I understand your confusion, because the history of this one is confusing. But it's not an affordable project. It is supposed to be a high-end apartment project for the type of demographic that Mr. Stacy spoke to, and it's not 10 acres. It's 22.18 acres is the total project area. As far... Oh, actually, real quick, the question about public... The public accessing the historical amenity, that must have also been lost in translation. It was a long presentation. The gate is where the two roads go in. The little cutout that's just west of that is a parking area for the public to access that amenity. So, it will be a public park with not only public access, but actually a parking area for the public to access it from. The gate will protect the members, the residents of this particular development, but the historical amenity, the linear park along Old King's Road, will be accessible to the public, and they will have parking available to it. The site plan specifically says visitors parking for trail. So, we're not restricting the public's access through any kind of a gate. The commercial versus residential question is a difficult one. Trust me, I represent this landowner who was at one point Old King's Interchange. I think that name was brought up earlier. That is the entity that owns... up earlier. That is the entity that owned everything. Ultimately, the land was converted to what's Flagler Pioneer Group LLC is the owner of the land. Kings Point Developer LLC is who developed Kings Point to the south. It's all part of the same original group that was Old Kings Interchange Incorporated. They own everything, or did, other than Walmart, from State Road 100 to Town Center Boulevard. And they would like nothing more than there to be commercial development on that property. They've been sitting on these properties. I think they were originally purchased in the late 90s. They were entitled by the city when they adopted their Unified Land Development Code and their own zoning map in the early 2000s. And as you can tell, there's been no development activity there. That is not for want of there being development activity. There's nothing more that these landowners would like, is to find somebody to develop their land. We thought we had found somebody to develop their land with Walmart. Walmart purchased the site and then chose not to build the project, because the economy collapsed, and a lot of the rooftops that were planned to be built were never built. And they build Walmarts based upon the number of rooftops within a certain amount of area. Part of this project that you haven't seen yet, because it'll come in the site plan if this is approved, is there is a cross-access easement with the Walmart site that we have to tie into. And we have been in communication with Walmart to try to get that driveway built before they build. Originally, the plan was Walmart would build it. They would leave the cutout. Walmart didn't develop. We now need that access for emergency access, and so we're trying to get that built first. So, we'll build it for Walmart as opposed to the original plan of them building it for us. I spoke to the General Counsel for Walmart in that effort. Mr. Faulkner has spoken to a broker for Walmart, as well as the engineer. When I spoke to the General Counsel for Walmart, they were leaning towards selling the property and not developing it. When I told him about this project, and I also sent him some information that staff provided to me about the number of rooftops that went up in Town Center recently, as well as the surrounding area, all the residential development, they may actually put that property back into the new store plan because of the rooftops. So, it's, this is a chicken before the egg kind of conundrum what we're in right now. We can't get the commercial development until we have the population density to drive that commercial development, because the developers won't build it. If they would, then this property would have been sold and would have been developed already. The final and most important point has to do with the traffic related to Old Kings Road and the part of it that hasn't been improved. I do know the traffic in Palm Coast. I did drive across Palm Coast three times today. This morning, I went up Old Kings Road all the way to Palm Coast Parkway, got coffee at Starbucks, and then drove to my office off the Parkway. And I've been driving through Palm Coast since Old Kings Road was two-lane, since State Road 100 was two-laned. And so, I've seen the traffic change. I understand people's concerns about that. The way that Phase Two of Old Kings Road is going to be funded, unless the city wants to raise taxes, is by developing Phase One. There is a funding agreement in place that is paying an assessment to recover some funds the city spent to build the road, as well as the bonds that were sold for the Phase One project, or the bonds that were not able to be sold for the Phase One project, so they had to find other funding sources. That funding agreement specifically states that as soon as the city gets paid back for the money that was used to build Phase One, it will be then devoted to Phase Two. So, we need to develop, this is Phase One, this is the four-lane portion that you're all familiar with, in order to get the funding to complete the project in Phase Two. First and foremost, what's known as Phase 2A is four-laning where the bridge is and realigning the Town Center access, so there's actually turn lanes, potentially a signalization or some other kind of traffic improvements. That funding is going to be driven either from the general fund and property taxes, or by developing Phase One. And this is Old Kings Point at the corner. That's starting to develop, which is great. This will be the next step. Maybe with these rooftops, Walmart will decide to develop. Maybe with these rooftops, the original commercial, the additional commercial areas around it will get potential purchasers and developers driving it. So, I understand everybody's concerns, and I share those concerns, but if there is a demand for commercial development, these properties, COM 2, COM 3, zone properties have been there since they were originally designated when the city adopted its first zoning map, and they haven't been developed. And that's not because the landowner isn't trying to market them. They have been actively marketed since day one, and these are the kinds of developments that will drive that development. So, it's, you know, we have to have something to push that, you know. Businesses and offices need people to travel to them and buy things from, and this will contribute to that. So, the concerns that were raised are legitimate concerns, and I share them, but this will hopefully actually contribute to solving that problem and not make it worse. Any other questions?
So, this would, Mr. Reichman, are there any comments you need to make?
This time.
Very good. So, this would conclude the public participation. Thank you. And I would ask City Council for comments, questions at this time?
I would just like to thank for the analysis and the additional affirmation answering the public's questions. I think that was great. I think we also need to keep in mind that this is not a site plan approval. We've been kind of going that direction. We are just looking at the changing of the land use. But yeah, no further questions. Thank you.
And that's one of my worries. Mr. Neal clearly said over here today that the rendering is likely to change. So, this is not at all the rendering we're going to see for fact. I also want to make sure that I'm not questioning. One of my concerns is not the quality of the building, because I understand that it's a very good quality. I didn't like some of the comments, and one of them, you explained it, Mr. Livingston, when you said that, and I heard it. Under what context you said it? There's too many single-family homes. I don't think so. We do need, if you want, I believe in diversity, but I'm not one to fund, especially where I came from. When it comes to density, it actually scares me, because I know where I came from, and I know what the three, four floors homes does to communities. And once again, I want it to be clear. I'm not talking about diversity. I'm talking about quantity on the buildings. Okay? That's basically what I have to say for now.
I have no questions or comments.
I would ask for a motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Council, let me go ahead, and before you, where there is a motion, just want to remind this council that this, as has been indicated just now, this is not a site plan. This is a rezoning. And in order for this to appropriately pass, it needs to be found, there needs to be substantial competent evidence on the record, supporting compliance and consistency with your comprehensive plan and your land development code. To the contrary, if this council has an inclination or desire to deny this application, again, the record must support that finding. There must be a determination supported by substantial competent evidence that there is something about this project and this application for rezoning that is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, or is inconsistent and does not meet the standards set forth in the land development code for rezoning. And again, I would remind council that what we're talking about here is rezoning from COM 3 to MFR 2. So, just wanted to remind council that we sit in a capacity of a quasi-generational board, not legislative board, and we are to apply those legal standards that are set forth in our comprehensive plan and our land development code to the application.
So, City Council members, is that clear, what the city attorney has said? Do you have any questions of Mr. Reichman at this time? Very good. All right. I would ask for a motion.
And being unable to find anything that's inconsistent with our future land use map, and reassuring it once again that when this comes time to a site plan, if it does, that we will have the chance as a governing body, once again, to have input on what actually gets put, if it does get that far, that this is not the time for that. With that being said, I will make a motion for the ordinance of approving rezoning of 10.85 more or less acres from high-intensity commercial to multifamily residential, too, for the property known as the Tribute.
So, the motion is made. I would ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Danko will second it. Is there any additional discussion from the City Council members at this time? Any questions? No discussion. I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Brinkeno?
No.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Kufus?
Affirmative.
Mayor Alton?
Yes.
Passes three to one.
Moving to item number eight. Ordinance. Mr. Reichman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is an ordinance of the City Council, City of Palm Coast, ordered to annex property to be included within the corporate area and city limits of the City of Palm Coast, providing for the annexation of approximately 141.5 acres to property described and exhibited in this ordinance, lying in the areas, excuse me, approximate to the existing city limits of the City of Palm Coast, Flagler County, Florida, providing for annexation in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for annexation of real property, amendment under the corporate city limits, providing for rights and privileges resulting from the annexation and the effect of annexation upon land uses, providing for effect on ad valorem taxes, providing for effect on businesses and occupations, for severability, for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Police staff has a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reichman. Jose Papa will have the staff presentation for this annexation petition.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of City Council. Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. This item is an annexation, a property commonly known as Grand Reserve East. Just to give you background, this is 141 vacant acres located about 3,000 feet north of State Road 100 on the east side of Roberts Road. What this parcel represents, as you can see here in red, is that this is the southernmost parcel that is within, at least in this area of Roberts Road, north of 100, of the Palm Coast service area. And that Palm Coast service area was established during 2007. That was a settlement of what they, I guess colloquially call the water wars, where the county was divvied up, divided among Flagler Beach, Hammock Dunes, Flagler County, Palm Coast, as to who would serve water and in what areas. And what this property represents is that, again, at least on Roberts Road, it's basically the end of the line, so to speak, for the Palm Coast service area. And as part of that, the city has an ordinance that requires annexation to the city if they would wish to receive water and sewer service from the city. And so again, that just highlights, again, Roberts Road, State Road 100. This is the subject area within the Palm Coast service area, based on the 2007 settlement agreement. With any annexation, we review it for consistency with the Florida statutes for annexation. One, it is contiguous to the city's boundary. It is reasonably compact, and it's not part of another incorporated municipality, and it will be used for urban purposes. And at this time, it does not create an enclave. At this time, city staff is recommending that City Council approve the annexation of Grand Reserve East. And I believe that the representative for the petitioner is here to answer any questions.
Can you just show me a bigger map, please?
How about this? Will this help? Councilman Brinkeno?
That's good enough.
This is 100, Roberts Road. This is the Seaveray parcel. This is Colbert Lane. Beach Village is here, and Wattsworth Park. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Does that conclude the presentation?
I'm sorry. Yes, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you.
And again, the applicant's agent is here if there are any questions.
Making District 3 bigger, right?
Good evening. Jay Livingston, Livingston and Sword, PA. There's no presentation prepared. This is a necessary step before really we can do anything with the property, because as Mr. Papa stated, the settlement agreement mandates annexation. And therefore, unless we try to develop it in the county and then annex it later, once we ask for water, there's nothing that we can do. You all don't have land use jurisdiction until first, the annexation is completed, and then second, the future land use map is adopted, which will be the next step, once the annexation is completed. The plan is for a single-family residential project, and the application that we were bringing forward to you would be a future land use map amendment to residential, capped to the unit count that we intend to build, so it's not the highest and best use type of analysis, and then a rezoning to the appropriate residential designation for single-family houses.
So, I'll ask City Council members questions or discussion on this issue?
Nope, I have none.
None. I would open this up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this issue? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the City Council. Any further discussion on this issue?
I would just like to note, I think it's at our staff's best interest and the applicant as well, that thank you for working with the city before trying to develop it through the county. So, I'd just like to say thanks for coming to the city before development occurred, even though the series of events to change zoning may or may not happen in the future. Thanks for coming to us first.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve this annexation.
Seconded.
And we have a second as well. Any additional discussion regarding this issue? I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Brinkeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Kufus?
Affirmative.
Mayor Alton?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
That concludes the ordinances for this evening. We will go to item number nine, Resolutions. Mr. Reichman?
Yes. Mr. Mayor and Council, this is a resolution of the City of Palm Coast, Flagler County, Florida, setting a proposed maximum ad valorem millage rate and tentative budget hearing, date, time, and location for the City of Palm Coast, Florida, Flagler County, Florida, for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'll be presenting the general fund budget and the maximum millage rate. We're not going to go over the timeline in detail, but to date, we have covered your annual audit, your staff evaluation. We had several budget presentations, and we will come back to council on August 10th to continue our budget presentations. So, today, we're going to take a look at the trimmed timeline. We're also going to take a look at the 2022 maximum millage rate proposal, personnel changes, general fund revenues and expenditures, and of course, what we're here today for the maximum millage rate recommendation. So, on July 1st, we received the preliminary values from the property appraiser. They were then updated on July 1st with the certified taxable value. The taxable value was certified at $6.4 billion, a 10% increase. So, within 35 days of that value certification, the current year proposed maximum millage rate must be set. The deadline is tomorrow. So, today, we're going to review the general fund budget with options to set the maximum millage. And as a reminder to council, the assessed millage can be reduced but cannot be increased after this point. The first public hearing is scheduled for September 9th at 5:30, and will be advertised on a trim notice that the property appraiser will send out to residents. This hearing will set the tentative budget and tentative millage So, the budget presented to you today is proposing the same millage rate that has been adopted since 2019, which is 4.6989. This is an overview of general fund positions. Total increase of 13 full-time staff physicians and 2.1 part-time seasonal hours are being crested for fiscal year 2022. The change in streets maintenance is due to moving seven physicians for facilities mowing to the facilities fund for fiscal year 22. Now, we reviewed these position requests in detail at your last two general fund presentations. We do have, in the upcoming slides, individual by department. As you can see, there is a transfer of a senior staff assistant from the city manager to communications. Human resources and financial services are asking for a new risk and benefit specialist and a finance technician. The city clerk's office is transferring half of a finance technician. The city clerk's office is transferring half of an FTE, a senior staff assistant, to the Information Technology Internal Services Fund. The fire department is requesting three firefighters. Public Works, two new positions, a signal technician and a maintenance technician. Community Development, we have a code enforcement supervisor split that is going sixty-five, thirty-five with the building department, and Planning is asking for a new planning technician. Parks and Recreation Department, for parks maintenance, a maintenance worker and an equipment operator. For Parks General, a seasonal recreation leader, part-time for the youth program. For the Gulf, a recreational specialist and cart attendant times seasonal. Construction Management Engineering is requesting one senior project manager. So we will now take a look at the general fund revenues and expenditures. This is a big-picture view of the general fund revenues. Overall, we're looking at a change of two million dollars. As council can see, the ad valorem are the largest revenue source in the general fund. The city's assessed value has increased ten percent with approximately four point three attributable to new construction. So assuming the same millage rate from last year of four point six nine eight nine, we would generate an additional two point eight million dollars in ad valorem revenues. So the next category totaling approximately seven million dollars includes the state revenues that the city receives. The state is projecting three point three million for half-cent sales tax and one point four for state revenue sharing. We are still currently waiting for state estimates on the communication services tax, but our projection of two point two million is in line with previous years. So you will notice that there's a decrease in the appropriated fund balance. That is due to the MEDNEX initiative that is not carrying to fiscal year twenty-two, so it accounts for that three million dollar decrease. For next year, we are requesting the use of six hundred and fifty thousand of appropriated fund balance to fund contingency to handle fluctuations in revenue and expenditures, as we have done in the past. We will now proceed to general fund expenditures. We did send out supporting worksheets with detailed line items as part of the agenda package, and we also placed them on the city's website for the public. This is a look of our administrative department, so there is an increase of eight percent. City Council's budget, the decrease in operating expenditures is mainly due to a decrease in subscriptions and travel. We have a position transfer, like I said earlier, from the city manager's budget to communications. The city clerk's office is transferring the half a staff assistant to the IT Internal Services Fund. City Attorney budget is increasing by approximately five point six percent, and that's mainly due to increase in regular salaries and CPI increase to the city attorney's contract. The economic development budget is decreasing by five point two. There are currently three positions budgeted in this division. Two positions are unfilled and are only budgeted for six months. That partially offsets an increase in economic development special projects. Human Resources and Financial Services are increasing mainly due to new position requests. The rest of the increases are just regular operations. We will now move on to our public safety departments. The fire department budget is increasing by ten point one percent due to three new firefighter EMT positions. The operation side is increasing due to fleet and equipment replacements and internal service charges that were moved from the non-partemental budget to the fire department. The Flagler County Sheriff's Office contract, original budget was four point six million with thirty-three deputies. The sheriff's original request was for ten additional deputies. We've received the update from state revenues at your July twentieth presentation, and combined with a decrease in the sheriff's office contractual increase from five percent to three and a half, we were able to add six of the ten requested deputies for a total budget of five million two seven nine. Now, we do have additional millage proposal review slides later in the presentation. We'll take a look at our other departments. So Construction Management Engineering budget is increasing by twenty-one point nine percent, mainly due to a new position request for a senior project manager. Planning budget is increasing by seven and a half percent, mainly due to a request for a new planning technician to meet the level of service. Code Enforcement is increasing by seven point five percent, mainly due to five point two percent. The code compliance manager was split fifty-fifty with building in fiscal year twenty-one. This budget reflects a thirty-five, sixty-five split, and that is according to current workload. Now, the streets maintenance budget has a decrease. While they requested two new FTEs, a signal technician and a maintenance technician, we are removing seven FTEs for facilities mowing to the Internal Services Facilities Fund, so that the net is that decrease. So we'll take a look at our Parks and Recreation. Overall increase of seventeen percent, mainly due to increase in seasonal part-time hours and additional youth programs. Also, the Palm Harbor Golf Club is adding a recreational specialist and seasonal part-time hours. The Parks Maintenance Budget is increasing by twenty-five point three percent. As we talked about earlier, that's adding two new FTEs, a maintenance worker and an equipment operator too, and the associated fleet and IT equipment. The balance of the increase is due to regular operating expenditures. We will now cover the non-partemental budget for the general fund. As you can see, the budget is changing. The UNFJU initiatives are expected to be completed by September thirtieth and are not carrying to fiscal year twenty-two. As I mentioned earlier, we are requesting a contingency of six hundred and fifty thousand for the purpose of handling fluctuations in revenues and expenditures. We're also proposing a transfer of five hundred and fifty thousand to the Streets Improvement Fund to help with the shortage in the pavement program. We will now move to TRIM and millage. This chart shows the history for the last five years for the millage rate, property values, receipts collected, and population. As you can see, the millage rate has stayed the same since two thousand and nineteen. Our property values continue to experience healthy growth. For fiscal year twenty-two, our increase was once again ten point twenty-two percent, and according to our Community Development Department, the estimated population is ninety-four thousand. Your next slide is going to have your millage rate options. So your rollback rate is four point four five nine three. Your majority vote is a max of six point three three six five. Your two-thirds vote would be six point nine seven zero two, and your proposed millage is the same as fiscal year twenty-one, millage at four point six nine eight nine. So as I said earlier, there was a few items that are not currently funded, and we'll go through that list. Next, the sheriff's office did request ten deputies. We only have six deputies included in the current millage rate, so the additional cost to accommodate the other four would be approximately four hundred and fifty-six thousand. The City of Palm Coast had additional staffing operational need requests of approximately six hundred and fifteen thousand, and the pavement program is still at a deficit of a million dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. What does all of that translate to in terms of millage? So in order to fund the four additional deputies, we would be looking at an additional point zero seven three seven in millage. To fund the additional City of Palm Coast operational needs, we would be looking at point zero nine nine five in millage, and to fund the streets pavement deficit, point sixteen sixteen. The amounts basically translate in a hundred thousand dollar taxable value home for the additional deputies, an additional seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. For the additional operational needs, nine dollars and ninety-five cents, and for the streets pavement deficit, sixteen dollars and sixteen cents. The total impact would be thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. Now, because of the increase in taxable value for homesteaded properties, a resident would be looking at forty-seven dollars and seventeen cents, and that difference is the increase in homesteaded value of your property. So what we need is guidance from council on what to include on the resolution to be sent to the property appraiser's office setting the maximum millage rate.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, we do. A reminder, public, of where they can find all of our budget information. As in previous years, we've set our fiscal year twenty twenty-two preparation tile on the city's website, and we post all of our presentations, budget timeline, and detailed worksheets for department budgets. And as a reminder, we will be back on August tenth. Yes, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I'll come back to City Council now, and questions, comments, discussion, please?
Sure. I would first thank you for the extended explanation of our general fund once again. I would just like to ask the current strategy or option set that we have for funding the city operational costs that were not budgeted for, whether or not that includes dipping into our city reserves or any type of other solutions that may be potentially viable, if you could elaborate on that?
Right now, the budget that we're proposing does not dip into reserves other than appropriating fund balance for contingency.
Understood.
Yes.
I have no questions at this time. I think we went through this three, four times, so I know it by heart.
Mr. Ninkel?
No questions. I've heard it before. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have just two comments. One, because of the timeline of the special election, I have not participated in the creation of the budget, so I'm scrambling now to dig down into the line items to have a complete and full understanding. It's my opinion that each of the City Council members will do their very best to reduce the tax burden on any of our residents and taxpayers. What that means is a commitment from each of us to look at each line item throughout the budget and make sure that we not only understand it, but that it makes sense for each of us. The other question I have is, I've heard on City Council that public safety is a paramount priority. I question the organization and the structure of the budget that leads to the funding of, I think in this case, the sheriff's deputies as a secondary priority, not a primary priority, as opposed to, and again, I haven't had a chance to look through all the line items, as opposed to other line items coming to the end of the presentation and being considered as a, will it fit in? So it's more of an organizational question. We have not had a chance to meet and discuss this yet, but we will have a chance. But once again, I know that I can speak for myself and hopefully all of the other council members that we will look to every line item to find ways to reduce the tax burden. I mean, I think that's the obligation that we have. So with that comment, I would now offer the public a chance to comment on the presentation of the budget and millage rate.
May I intervene and ask one more question for staff? Do you mind elaborating on the city operations that wouldn't be funded?
I'm sorry?
The line item of the city operations that wouldn't be funded, if you could go through and just...
Okay, so the staff requests that were not included in the budget numbers are four full FTEs and equipment for the streets department, three FTEs and equipments for parks and recreation, and one FTE for financial services.
I see. I'm just, I'm curious, how do we plan on, I mean, this seems like it's something that is not, we're putting it into the context, as a council, do we want these city operations that seem to be, I mean, we're budgeted for them, we're just not going to have the funding for them, so do we create a strategy to try to optimize the full-time employees that we'll be trying to get next year? How do we move forward? Do we try to tap into our reserves to be able to fulfill these services that are necessary this year? Are these all options, or does it have to come from the millage rate?
So council is above the fund balance reserve. However, typically, fund balance is used for one-time type of expenditures, capital in nature, so they're not recurrent. So by adding staff with the fund balance, you're basically creating an operational expense that will carry into the next year.
And what about the street maintenance program? Would that be a one-time cost incurred, or did that also include FTEs?
No, the street maintenance would be one million to continue funding the need for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so that would be more of a typical situation where we could tap into the reserves to fund that?
Yes, however, that is a fund that is projecting to have deficits in the future, and that's mainly due to the revenues that are within that fund. The fuel tax is not something that we're seeing an increase on, you know, fuel-efficient vehicles.
Thanks a lot, electric cars.
Are not producing as much in our fuel tax, and that's, you know, not just unique to us. So we do have a presentation on that fund on Tuesday, where you'll see that, you know, we can make it up, you know, for this year, but we are projecting to have a problem twenty-three and beyond.
Understood.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Good. Okay. So again, I would open up for public comment. Would any members of the public like to come forward and comment on the presentation?
Good evening, Mayor. Congratulations. Now that you're actually sitting in that seat, I'm going to repeat some of the same things that I said. Please introduce yourself.
Park Strobridge, Flagler County Sheriff's Office. I'm here on behalf of Sheriff Staley, who is involved in some training tonight. I want to kind of restate what I said a couple weeks ago before this body, is that Sheriff Staley does not support increasing millage rates to fund law enforcement. We've now seen for the third time that Parks and Recreation budget is the priority over funding law enforcement, because law enforcement is still the add-on. Again, I encourage you all, I know that you all support it, and there are probably many ways to fund this, but that stool won't sit right with just two legs, it needs all three legs. That includes the law enforcement. It is the actor thought within the budget, and I would encourage you to dive deep into the budget to find out where that could be funded and supported. That's the only reminder that I would like to say before this body, because you all have indicated certainly your support for law enforcement. You can't have safe parks unless you have enough people to police those parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Hello, my name is Mark Lewis. In my experience, budgets are put together annually in big corporations and probably like Palm Coast here, where if you didn't spend it last year, you're not going to get it next year. And the other piece of this is, a lot of this is a big wish list. I don't know if Palm Coast has had any reductions in staff, but in industry, there's cycles that force you to lay off people who aren't maybe performing quite as well as the rest of the team. I don't know that any of these things occur here, but I would suggest that if we sharpen our pencils as a city, we can cut some costs. I don't think the millage rate should go up. I think we're already looking at at least a ten percent increase based on the property values and the new construction. I think there's plenty of, I think there's plenty of money that's coming in with a relatively modest population increase. What was it, ninety-four thousand to a hundred thousand or something like that? Some of the other increases in the departments, like Human Resources, Parks- like human resources, Parks and Recreation, these are big increases, 20%, 24%, 25%. That's a lot. And I would encourage, I would encourage you to roll back our milage rate and sharpen pencils and find ways to do things with less people and less money. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would step forward and comment?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jessica Bowman, and I'm coming to speak before you because I do not agree with an increase in milage rate. The reason why I don't agree with it is because I haven't really seen any staffing models from the sheriff's office to go with the increase in deputies. And we've heard that there's a decline in crime in the city. And then also, I'd like to understand the funding from the county itself, because it looks like they've requested 15 additional deputies from the county. So I'm just really trying to understand why there's an additional need here, and if there's any staffing models to support this additional need, as well as any staffing models to support the other additional full-time employees for the city of Palm Coast. Another thing I would wonder is if there could be a shift in code enforcement to resolve this issue for sheriff deputies. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to step forward and comment?
Charles Bowman. Listen, it's not rocket science. Our properties are soaring in value, soaring. Reach to the depths of you that is conservative in some nature. There has to be some in each of you, correct? I mean, my house, we bought it in December. It's gone up six figures. How can you not find the money to do anything you want to do when the prices of the real estate here are soaring? It was stated prior that 92% of the taxes collected around here come from the residential sector. Now, I'm no genius, but if 92% of the money comes from the residential sector, and we're all experienced, and I suspect we are, a soar in our property values, give us a little bit of a break, maybe reduce taxes. If you need to find the money, sharpen the budget. Look for duplicative processes. Look for somewhere to take the money. The money's not the issue. We're giving you a literal fortune. Just manage it better. Be good stewards of the money. It's not hard. That's all.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public like to come forward and comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment section for this item and bring it back to the council for additional discussion.
I have no additional discussion. I feel comfortable, since this is a tentative milage rate, that needs to be said, that we can move forward with the current tax rate and be able to eliminate any excess line items that we think we can somehow squeeze out, even though we're not funding necessarily all of the budget. I look forward to trying to squeeze, you know, additional funds out of this budget wherever we can. But right now, a tentative milage rate, like I said earlier, we don't want to hit the snooze button or the panic button. This is, needs to be done by tomorrow. If we set the tentative milage rate at our current milage rate, then we will avoid any backups here.
Completely agree with you. Don't forget, this is not the final budget. We have to view find it, and we're going to go through it. And when it comes to keeping the same milage rate, 4.6989, we have a saying in the police department, which is, "I'd rather have it and not need it than need it and not have it." I'm talking about the three friends, me, Smith and Wesson. That's what we refer to. So I compare that a lot. So I'd rather have it and not need it than need it and not have it. So therefore, I think that we should, you know, this is the milage rate, that if we have to reduce or view find, or we find a place to, you know, skin up a little bit, then we'll do it. If not, at least we protect it. Thank you.
I'm encouraged by our new mayor saying that he is going to dive deep into this budget and look for items that we can possibly cut. I'm on the same page with you on that, and I support you in that. I would like to see us roll back the milage rate and give taxpayers a break. I've made no secret of that. And I hope we can find the cuts we need to do something like that. When you campaigned in your TV commercials and your literature, you campaigned as a conservative who won't raise taxes. Keeping the milage rate at its present rate is a tax increase. So I'm hoping we can find places to actually make cuts and give folks a break. I think, as you know, the property values that have soared, it's an unusual moment in real estate, not just here, but throughout the country. Prices have been soaring. You know, there's a shortage of houses, you know, all over the place. People are doing acceleration clauses in order to get a house. It's kind of insane. You know, the comps that lenders are using are all out of whack now because of just, you know, the bidding on these houses. People are getting mortgages and then putting an extra 20 or 30 grand on top in order to get their loan. So I'm just looking forward to seeing what you find as you dive into this, as I'm looking for things, and I'll have a list, too. Glad to hear you're looking at it. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment, and I'll double down on my commitment to get up to speed on reviewing every line item and looking for every possible reduction. I am somewhat experienced in the creation of budgets. So I look at the milage rate tonight as a tool. I prefer to have as many tools in the bag as I can to get the job done. I would not want to reduce the number of tools so early in the process. We still have some time under which to find the reductions that, and I'm sure we will. So I am inclined to, again, explain that the decision before us now is to put a cap, a stop on a milage rate. In other words, after tonight, we will not be able to increase the milage rate by any amount. That is our commitment. However, we certainly will have the ability to lower it as we work through, or as I work through the budget going forward. So that's my comment. So with that, I would ask for a motion for the evening.
I want a motion to keep the same milage rate, 4.6989.
Seconded.
Is there any additional discussion or comment at this time?
So we're voting on the range of milage rates, right? The low end, the high end. Is that correct?
The cap.
My motion is to keep it exactly as it is.
Oh, I thought we were giving the range tonight.
The motion is for the proposed maximum milage rate, which is contained in the proposed resolution, which provides for a maximum proposed milage rate to be provided to the county for advertisement, which represents a 5.37% increase from the rolled-back rate. So again, if you, if this motion is approved, this will be the maximum milage rate that you will ultimately be able to consider in August and September when you take final action on the ultimate milage rate that you will be imposed, consistent with the budget that you approve as well.
All right, got it. Just wanted to make sure. Yeah.
Okay. I would just make one more comment about the 10% increase in property values, that if you're a homeowner and you have homesteaded your home, that you're not realizing a 10% increase in your tax bill. That's all.
Right, but renters would, people that rented their property would face that, correct?
The owner of the rented property would be...
And rental prices would go up.
Potentially.
For tenants in those properties.
In non, it would obviously be at the end of their term, but potentially, the next lease cycle could go up.
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion. Does anyone here hear the motion again? Are we good?
No, we're good.
And we have a second?
Yep.
Oh, and point of order, Mr. Mayor. You can just ask, you don't have to do an individual vote if you don't wish to. You can just ask for the a's and the n's.
I appreciate that. It's, I'm a creature of habit. So as I'm learning, and I appreciate the comment very much, but I'll stick to my guns tonight, and then we'll move forward. But I will ask for a roll call vote. Thank you.
Sure, I just would like to clarify the motion as well to include setting the date and time is also included in that resolution for setting the tentative rate and meeting times.
Is that okay, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, the motion was to approve the draft resolution that is contained in the agenda packet, which is the proposed maximum milage rate that I was reading earlier, as well as the information that was, will be provided to be advertised that was mentioned by your city clerk.
That's my motion.
All right, I resecond the motion.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Brankino?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Kupus?
Yes.
Mayor Alton?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Moving along to item number 11. Actually, 11, 12, and 13, the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we've got agenda item number 10.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay.
Don't worry, I want to, I want to get out of here, too, but I can't let you miss item number 10.
Item number 10, if you'd be so kind.
Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the fiscal, fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, annual action plan to allocate $340,392 of funding from the CARES Act for Public Service Subrecipient Assistance Program, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute necessary documents, providing for survivability conflicts, providing for implement actions, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. I would ask for comment from the city council regarding this item.
Mr. Papa, you're not going to repeat that presentation again, are you?
If you don't need me to, Councilman.
Kind of, right?
Thank you.
Yeah. Is everyone okay? Mr. Papa is here to give the presentation again. It was pretty clear at the last workshop.
Yeah, it was pretty clear.
No comments here.
No comments.
Mr. Danko, any comments?
Done.
Good. I would open this up for public comment. Would anyone care to comment in the public on this resolution item? Seeing no members of the public coming forward, I'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the city council. Any further discussion? I would ask for a motion.
I will move for approval.
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion? Okay. And again, I'll ask for the roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Brankino?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Kupus?
Affirmative.
Mayor Alton?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Now I will move to item number 11, 12, and 13, which represent our consent agenda. I would ask the city council members, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like removed from the consent? Anyone? Mr. Brankino, anything?
No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
The next Mr. Mayor would be if there's anyone that would make, like to make any comments on any of the consent agenda items. Those folks should come forward now and make their comments.
Okay, any members of the public that would like to discuss any of the consent items, please step forward. Seeing none, I will close this section for public comment. Back to the city council. No additional discussion?
Move to, move to approve the consent agenda, is ready?
No, I'll second it.
Any additional discussion? Then, creature of habit, I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Brankino?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Kupus?
Yes.
Mayor Alton?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, we are, next item is public participation. I would invite the public to step forward to the podium if they would like to make any comments this evening. Seeing no one coming forward, I will close this section for public comment. Next item, discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. City council members?
I'll go first.
Sounds good.
Sure, I'll go down the line. It sounds good to me. First, I would like to welcome our new mayor, Mayor Alton. I'd like to congratulate him on his successful campaign. I'm also encouraged by the behavior of our council tonight and our willingness to work together. I'm encouraged for our future and that we can get back to doing what city council is supposed to do, argue during workshops, and be able to come to a unity and agreement, and then present it before in our business meetings. So welcome Mayor Alton, and I am looking forward to being successful and accomplishing everything that we can on city council together, and hopefully as a governing body. Oh, I'd also like to thank Vice Mayor Brankino for filling in as mayor. Honestly, I have had that hat. It's not, not what you want to be wearing. So I would just like to thank Councilmember Brankino, Vice Mayor Brankino, for all the hard work and the additional pressure and stress that comes along with having to chair these meetings. So thank you.
Thank you. I have a pretty big back, don't worry. I only have good things today. David, if I may, Mr. Mayor, congratulations on your win. Serve well, please. Make sure you keep up your good ethics, the ones at least I had when I previously spoke with you. And please be the man you showed me to be once when we spoke. That's all I'm asking of you. Thank you very much. The other one is, once again, sheriffs, first responders, fire department, once again, they saved that little girl that needs help. We know now that she needs help. They went out there again, and they saved her. Thank you. They did it again. So first responders and deputies? Fine. Now, we also had another case in front of, I believe, Arbor Freight, a Uall truck, which seventeen dogs and cats dying. And that was a Good Samaritan, a Good Samaritan, that he noticed something wrong. He saw something. He heard something, say something. He did. We were able to save those animals and charge the ex-owners, because they're no longer the owners of those poor little things. Mr. Mayor, I think we should find a way of recognizing this Good Samaritan, either with some kind of proclamation or thanking him for being the person he was. I don't know if I should direct my words to, excuse me, Denise, but at least I want to make it public. People that does that deserve to be recognized. Thank you, sir. That's my comments.
Well said. Well said. Thank you. Councilman Danko?
Again, just want to welcome you. Congratulations. Looking forward to working with you. Want to thank Councilman Brakino for putting up with us before you arrived. It wasn't easy, but he did a great job. And I agree with him on recognizing that Good Samaritan. So I hope we can find some way to do that. I'm a big animal lover. I've always had rescued dogs and cats. So it's a big deal to me. And finally, Victor, if you're listening from your hospital room, we are all praying for your fast recovery and can't wait for you to get back here. Thank you.
Very good. Amen to that. So as the new kid on the block, I have two things to say. One thing I will say at every meeting is I appreciate the attendance of the public, of the residents. This system only works if you all participate. So I commend you for coming to the meetings, for stepping up to the podium, for expressing what you like and you don't like. You will always be welcome at our or my meetings, so please come back and visit us at every meeting that you possibly can. And my other comment is, again, as the new kid on the block, I have to thank staff. Every member of this organization, this City of Palm Coast government, has stepped forward and helped me and offered to me a sense of hopefulness, a sense of professionalism, a sense of we can get this done and we can work together. So I can't thank staff enough for their efforts that they have shown to me, and I'm sure we will enjoy working together going forward. So that would be my comment. And now I would turn it over to comments from the city attorney.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing. And finally, comments from our city interim manager.
Thank you, Mayor Alton, and I sincerely look forward to working with you in the future as we move forward and continue to work with our city council members. I do have one item, if I could, please. As we do this time of the year, our organization, alongside our emergency management partners, continue to monitor conditions in the trop- continue to monitor conditions in the tropics, and as we move forward towards peak hurricane season, I want to encourage the citizens of Palm Coast to complete your hurricane preparedness, and including getting a disaster preparedness guide that is available for download and at numerous public facilities, and that includes here at City Hall. So thank you, be safe, be well. Good night.
Motion for adjournment.
Is there a second? Oh, yeah, seconded.
There you go. See? That's how you do it. Very good, very good.